Over the crowd. Good evening. I call this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. It is April 22nd. Our mission statement is connecting our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services. I'd like to thank you all who are watching via livestream and those who are watching and recording this meeting. On May 1st, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to Officer Ken Kurtz is our Sergeant at Arms for this evening's meeting. We thank you for your attendance. I will be delivering this evening's indication. Just want to start off by saying Happy Earth Day. Want to remind everyone that there is no planet B, so the investments that we make in sustainability, in our staff, in enhancing the community are like seeds that will grow into a mighty oak. If you are able, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we adopt this evening's agenda, it is Town Council policy to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share? Okay, I recognize a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
I'm going to adopt this evening's agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Rao, second by Councilmember Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously seven zero. There are four items on this evening's consent agenda: a resolution approving interlocal agreement with Wake County for administration of erosion and sedimentation control, resolution authorizing an application to the NCDQ for a grant for the Sawmill Creek stream restoration, resolution authorizing an application to the NCDQ for a grant for the Sawmill Creek Greenway, and approval of March 2024 Town Council Meeting minutes. Would any council member like to pull any of those for discussion before we adopt? I entertain a motion to adopt this evening's consent agenda. I have a motion from Councilmember Rao, second by Mayor Potam Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously seven zero also. Tonight, we have two administrative reports, FY 2024 Quarter Three Financial and Budget Administration Report and Small Business Program Quarterly Update. Administrative reports are reported for information purposes only unless anyone has any questions. Are there any questions on either of those subjects? Okay, moving on. We have a number of presentations. We would like to acknowledge the Nepal Day event held April 20th. I'm sorry that I was out of town and missed the celebration. A proclamation was read at that time by council members and presented to the North Carolina Nepal Association. It is my pleasure to read it again this evening, and then I will request Mrs. Kalpana Bandari, General Secretary NCNC, to come forward to receive it. This is proclamation recognizing April 20th, 2024 as Nepal Day. Whereas Nepalese citizens living in the town of Morrisville and in Wake County comprise a significant portion of the Asian demographic, which makes up almost half of our local residents, and whereas Nepalese citizens play a key role in our community by making significant contributions to the economic and social well-being of the town, and whereas the Nepalese people provide cultural diversity to this area with their diverse ethnic background, including over 100 different languages, and whereas the Nepalese have been a strong supporter of the U.S. and our allies during the Great World Wars and lost tens of thousands of Nepalese during World War II alone, and whereas Buddha was born in Nepal and the Nepalese community has always been a harbinger of peace, harmony, and tolerance, and whereas the Nepal Center of North Carolina, NCNC, Inc., is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization established in 1999, serving Nepalese American residents across the state of North Carolina. Now therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim April 20th as Nepal Day in the Town of Morrisville and calls for residents to celebrate the past and ongoing contributions of the Nepalese to our community. Looks like you're already halfway up. Why don't you come along a little way? We're gonna meet right at the dot. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. This is a beautiful dress. We're gonna look right at her. And I'd love it if you'd like to share a little bit about what happened on Saturday and the importance of this proclamation.
Sure, sure. Thank you. On behalf of Nepal Center of North Carolina, I'd like to express my heartfelt gratitude to the Town of Morrisville for recognizing the third Saturday of April as the Nepal Day. In fact, it was Town of Morrisville in 2017 that started this proclamation process, and Wake County followed in 2018, North Carolina House of Representatives in 2023, and this year, Town of Apex.
Okay.
And it's been a historic moment. And on Saturday, it was pretty awesome. We missed you. And it was attended by representatives from folks at North Carolina House of Representatives, Town of Morrisville, Apex, and the event was attended by more than 1,000 people. Like, we didn't keep a count, but probably 1,500 to 2,000 people, showcasing the Nepali culture and heritage and food and culture and everything. It was a prehistoric moment. And we appreciate and we are deeply honored to be present here and having Town of Morrisville and the surrounding areas recognize the contribution that Nepali community has made to the fabric of the society. And thank you so much, and we hope to be able to celebrate Nepal Day in many, many coming years.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
And we have two more proclamations that will be read tonight. Councilmember Rao will read the proclamation recognizing National Small Business Week. Aaron Hudson, Strategic Plan Manager, will come forward afterwards to receive this proclamation.
Thank you, and I want to thank the Morrisville Chamber for having a wonderful annual meeting last week and for what they've been doing to support small businesses. This is proclamation recognizing April 28th and May 4th, 2024, as National Small Business Week. Whereas the United States Small Business Administration has recognized the contributions of entrepreneurs and small business owners for over 60 years through National Small Business Week, and whereas, as part of the week's activities, the SBA honors impactful business owners, entrepreneurs, and community members from all 50 states and U.S. territories through National Small Business Week awards. Morrisville congratulates Dylan Reed Gurkin of Recycle LLC located in neighboring Raleigh for receiving the North Carolina Small Business Person of the Year Award. And whereas, we encourage Morrisville and surrounding areas' small business owners and entrepreneurs to take advantage of programming offered through the SBA during this week, including in-person events and a virtual education summit. And whereas, in September 2022, Morrisville received a $300,000 grant fund through the SBA and launched a small business pilot program. And whereas, since its launch, the Morrisville Means Business Program has partnered with staff, community members, multiple chambers of commerce, area workforce development agencies, higher education institutions, financial institutions, and other entities to learn about the diverse business population in Morrisville and develop responsive programming to meet those needs. And whereas, there are approximately 200 businesses reflected in our Small Business Directory, ready to do business with those who live, work, and play in Morrisville. Now therefore, the Town Council, the Town of Morrisville, is hereby recognized April 28th and May 4th as National Small Business Week in the Town of Morrisville. We thank our area business owners, entrepreneurs, and community members for their unique contributions to Morrisville and its economy. DJ Colley, Mayor, Michelle Parker-Evans, and Town Council. Thank you.
I'm gonna take just a couple of minutes of privilege. Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council for recognizing National Small Business Week. I would even miss if I didn't thank Congresswoman Deborah Ross, who was able to grant us a community project funding grant award in federal fiscal year 2022, which is how we were able to obtain grant funds, which is what we've been using to run our Morrisville Means Business Small Business Pilot Program. With those funds, through that pilot program, we gained new skills, resources internally, and we built newer, enhanced relationships with our community partners so that we could best serve our small business members in our community. We've mentioned a lot of things in this proclamation and in the administrative report shared this evening, but we've also been able to offer three new grant opportunities, really which started last summer. So through those programs and opportunities, we offer a COVID-19 micro relief grant, professional support services grant, and a storefront outfit grant. We have served, let's see, 28 businesses with the COVID-19 micro relief grant, 16 businesses with professional support services grants, and six businesses with our storefront outfit grant. And once that last grant completes towards this summer, we will have put over $186,000 back into the Morrisville community with the benefit of small businesses made possible through that grant. So please continue to support small businesses here in Morrisville and the town of Morrisville.
We'd also like to show our appreciation to the town's administrative professionals by proclaiming this week as Administrative Professionals Week. I will read the proclamation, and then we're gonna invite any administrative professionals who are present to come forward and accept the proclamation, and the whole council will get behind them because we have your back. This proclamation recognizing Administrative Professionals Week, April 22nd through 26th, 2024, whereas administrative professionals, including administrative assistants, executive assistants, office managers, secretaries, et cetera, comprise 7.2% of the Morrisville, North Carolina workforce, and whereas administrative professionals play an essential role in coordinating the office operations of a business, government, educational institutions, and other organizations, and whereas administrative professionals serve as vital information hubs in the modern office, managing information, organizing the office, mastering office technology, providing strategic support to teams and companies, and helping me print out this agenda. Thank you. Whereas the work of administrative professionals today requires advanced knowledge and expertise in communications, computer software, office technology, project management, organization, customer service, and other vital office management responsibilities, and whereas Administrative Professionals Week 2024 highlights the major contributions of administrative professionals to businesses and government, and is focused on honoring the professionals who support organizations and governments, and whereas the International Association of Administrative Professionals, or IAAP, and the IAAP Carolinas Region, provide administrative professionals with education, networking opportunities, certification, and other career-enhancing programs while also advancing the image of the profession. Now therefore, we, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville, hereby proclaim the week of April 22nd through 26th, 2024, as Administrative Professionals Week, and April 24th, 2024, as Administrative Professionals Day. Celebrating the valuable contributions of administrative professionals in Morrisville, North Carolina, call on management and the business community to join in recognizing these outstanding professionals to support continued training and development for administrative staff, recognizing that a well-trained workforce is essential for success in today's business world. This time, you too, and wherever else Brandon feels would be appropriate to come on up. And if we can all join them, that'd be great. Is there someone else you wanted to bring up, Michelle?
But one of my team is here to support me in Morrisville tonight, and so I was inviting him to come on.
Please come up.
He's the deputy clerk for Durham County.
Oh, excellent. Okay. Welcome to Morrisville. Come see us again. You've got her back. So here you are in front of the mic. Would you guys like to share any thoughts? No?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for joining us. We invite Jeffrey Brown, Public Works Director, to come forward to share the next presentation.
Our community needs to know that the public works has a hand in touching the lives of every single one of our residents on a daily basis, from maintaining our infrastructure such as our streets, sidewalks, streetlights, parks, athletic fields and courts, greenways, facilities, and town vehicles to ensuring solid waste services are consistently provided. Our town is modeling the way for sustainable practices through the efforts of the Public Works Department. When it comes down to it, they are dedicated individuals who take pride in what they do. A lot of times, you'll hear public works individuals referred to as the ones that make things happen behind the scenes. A good day for public works is when we remain behind the scenes and everything works as it should. When we're brought to the forefront, it means something is not really happening the way that was meant to. We get called in because we have the skills and tools for the job, and it becomes all hands on deck. We want to have a seamless behind-the-scenes kind of action every day with what we're doing. We're successful when town residents don't even know we're there. We come in, we provide the services we need to provide without any impact to you. That's a good day in public works. We appreciate our fire and police counterparts, but they couldn't do their jobs without the support and dedication of public works. For instance, during a winter weather event or following a natural disaster, public works is often the first to respond and the last to leave. I just want to take a moment to remind everyone that public works employees are classified nationally as first responders, and a lot of people lose sight of that. There are a lot of hands working together that nobody ever sees, but these are the hands that hold the town together.
Very nice.
And before we go into the presentation, we may have to do that. We can just go with the questions. But I'd like all public works staff to express tonight's stand-up. So as I said, I'm honored to serve in the public works department of the town, the district president, and I have a great group of individuals I work with each and every day. We have staff of about 26 individuals, including myself. We have 26 positions currently in office and not building at the same time that the public works can get there. And APWA...
Sorry. Thank you. You should have told me that earlier, Bianca. Apologize. We'll start from the top. But APWA's mission is advancing the quality of life for all, so I've kind of adopted that for us here at Public Works internally. So just kind of highlight some of our FY 24 accomplishments. We have recently, this year, put in four EV chargers, two here at Town Hall, and then two at Morrisville Community Park, with a total of eight additional ports added to what we already had for EV infrastructure. The Public Works Department had a big hand in creating their Dragonfly Disc Golf Course. We worked with parks, but a lot of heavy lifting went to staff and public work, so I appreciate the efforts they made on that. Grounds and athletics enhancement, as you can see from when I started, it had just started, but we continue to enhance the grounds and the way things look around our facilities and our parks. You know, we're putting annuals out, and we're replacing them in spring and going into the winter, so it just adds that little pop to your facilities. Planting trees, you know, we've talked about our tree canopy and what we need to do as a community to save our tree canopy and to increase that. You know, public works is doing our part. This year, we've planted over 300 trees at Morrisville Community Park and along Grace Park Greenway. Pavement condition survey, we just finished our pavement condition survey in December of 2023. Our pavement condition index is an 82. Somebody asked, well, what was it last time it was done? And two years ago, it was an 84.9, so it dropped a little bit. And the reason for that is, one, infrastructure ages, and so as roads increase in age, then obviously that decreases the quality of that roadway. But one of the things that kept us up for a period of time is also is the number of new streets that get added. That certainly averages that out, because that pavement condition index is measured from 0 to 100, with 100 being the best. So compared to our peer communities, we only fall behind Fuquay Varina. I think they are at an 85, but we're at an 82, but higher than our other neighboring communities. Facility improvements, we have one elevator in the town, and we modernized that this past fiscal or this fiscal year. So that has been completed at our Aquatic Center, and we also completed the roof at Town Hall, as far as replacing the roof in anticipation for our up-and-coming solar project that we're going to move forward with. So what are some influences? And I mentioned in the opening slide that we had 26 positions. We've had some vacancies. We've had one vacancy in our streets division ever since I've started. So that's been almost 19 months now that that position's been vacant. So we've been recruiting for that, trying to get people here. We do interviews. We feel like we're getting close. We go through the position, you know, process of getting ready, you know, to offer a job, and then they've taken a job somewhere else. So it's been a challenge to fill positions, especially in our streets division. So, you know, what are we doing? You're trying, what can we do differently? You know, so that's one of the things that we're looking at, you know, looking at succession planning, you know, what's five years down the road looks like? What does 10 years look like? So we just don't focus on the now, we focus on the future. Fleet replacement, this was mentioned in Chief Acosta's presentation about the difficulty of getting vehicles. That has been a chore, to say the least. Reason being, because manufacturers, we will go through the process of ordering vehicles, and we'll issue a PO, and they'll come back and say, well, we can't make these vehicles, so we're canceling your order, and we'll bump you to the front of the next year. So that has been a challenge, but I think we have strategized, and I think we've moved forward, and I think we've overcome that hurdle. And so we're in the process of working through that now. And then also, the cost of outfit a vehicle, you know, it may, a vehicle may only cost $40,000, but you're spending another $40,000 in equipment to outfit a police vehicle. So, you know, those costs continue to rise. And repair costs, so obviously, as vehicles age, just like anything, your vehicle or your things at home, as infrastructure ages, then you can expect to spend more money. And so that's what goes into the next slide, was our aging infrastructure. But one of the things that we do well, I think at Public Works, is preventative maintenance. You know, we try to identify things that we can do internally to extend the life of an asset. So making sure it's well-maintained, making sure it's serviced intermittently, you know, based on the recommendations of the manufacturer. So we do a very good job of that. And then expansion of town events and facilities. You know, everybody gets excited about growth and new facilities coming online, and we as, and Public Works do as well, but also comes additional resources that we need to maintain that. You know, when we grow, you know, a dog park or new amenities at Church Street Park, that comes with additional resources that we need to make sure that it's well-maintained, and the community has come to expect that. We want to continue to provide that level of service. And so that means we need additional resources as we move forward. And then, you know, another challenge, you know, for us is looking at, you know, what is the vision for Church Street Park? You know, that was a unique challenge for me when I started here. The world of cricket was certainly something I had not been exposed to in my career, which has been a blessing and a curse at the same time, because it presents itself unique challenges. And, you know, what is, we now have a premier cricket field that's kind of in the middle of a neighborhood park, and, you know, we try to draw events there, and then that prevents challenges for, you know, parking and various things of that nature. So, and then, you know, fencing, you know, if we really want to look at Church Street Park moving forward as a cricket venue, then, you know, we need to, you know, know what the council's vision is. So, you know, it'd be helpful to get some feedback as we move forward and plan in the coming years. And then contracted services, you know, we rely on contracted service, provide solid waste collection or litter collection, provide some grounds maintenance to facilities, a ride-away maintenance, as well as janitorial services. Current initiatives, obviously, I mentioned solar installation. I think, you know, recently you've been receiving an update that we're kind of on hold. We have two projects that are in the Hopper Town Hall Solar, as well as the Aquatic Center. We're waiting on an exemption through the Department of Energy for solar panels, because the Buy America, Build America clause requires components to be made in America, or at least 55% of that. And so solar panels do not meet that requirement, so Department of Energy is working on a blanket exemption for all solar projects funded through Department of Energy. So as we navigate that, you know, we'll hopefully get that project started as soon as we can get that finalized. Pavement projects, you know, we're getting ready to, recently, the Town Council awarded a bid to Barn Hill Contracting for our street resurfacing for FY 24. And we're also looking at getting ready to start some Greenway resurfacing behind the Walmart, resurface that section of Greenway, and then, you know, and then pavement rejuvenator, and that's basically to bring back the quality of asphalt in recently repaved streets. So that's, again, that's something that preventative maintenance, that I was talking about earlier, that just extends the life of that asset. MCP playground replacement is something that we've slated for this year and working with engineering to get that project started. We're working right now, re-sodding cricket pitch this week in preparation for upcoming cricket season. We continue to work through our ADA transition plan. Vehicles for PD, we already talked about. Increasing tree canopy, we continue to do that. Replacement of a glass block wall at MASC, that project is probably 75% complete. Chief Lazinski talked about bringing bees to Fire Station 3 at his presentation. I appreciate the excitement that was generated from Town Council in support of that. So we're excited about that, and I commend Chief and Kimberly Conley in our office for their efforts in pushing that. You know, because again, we want to model the way for things. We don't want to be a follower. I mean, we want to model our practices that others look to us as being innovative. Goes along with our core values. So also evaluation implementation of energy saving measures. We're constantly looking at what we can do to reduce energy costs from sustainability standpoint. We're in the process of completing a design for our new public works complex. I'd like to thank all of you ahead of time for your support on that. So as we move forward to trying to finalize that, you know, it's certainly something that the community needs and staff is certainly excited about. And then also along with our energy efforts is continuing installation of building automated systems. That gives us a better control of scheduling for HVAC and energy usage in facilities. It, you know, gives us an opportunity to control that at our fingertips, you know, from a computer. And then also builds mechanisms in there to automatically shut systems down when the building goes unoccupied, when the building alarm set, then that system goes into unoccupied mode. So looking ahead, FY25 and beyond, obviously we talked, touched on the public works complex. That is something that has been needed for a long time. And I think just council has been talking about it, management's been talking about it for years. Staff has been told one's coming. I keep telling them one's coming. I can promise you it's coming. A short wind, but it's coming. Solid waste, obviously as we go into next fiscal year, our solid waste contract with GFL expires in June of 2025. So we have basically, you know, one more year of that. So we'll be working to put out an RFP for those solid waste services moving into the future. And that's an opportunity for council to look at what services are currently being provided now. And if we want to enhance that level of service or change what's being done, that's an opportunity to do so. And then continue to maintain our service levels. You know, obviously, the community has grown accustomed to the level of service that the department provides, and we want to continue that level of service or even enhance it when we have the ability to do so. Sustainability, you know, I feel like we are leaders in sustainability in the town of Morseville. I feel like we have accomplished a lot in a short amount of time since the master sustainability plan was adopted in June of 2022. We've got a lot of successes. And so I want to say thank you to each of you for your support on that. And then accreditation, you know, people say, why is accreditation important? You know, accreditation is important because it forces us as a department to look at our practices and the way we do business against national practices and the standards that have already been established. And it gives us an opportunity to review those ongoing and see if there's things that need to be changed, updated, or if there's outdated stuff, then we need to update it. So it's a kind of an ongoing review of what we do on a daily basis. So some facts and figures for you. 543, that's the number of work orders completed by our fleet division in FY23. 58.96, number of street miles that the town maintains. 2,384 is the number of work orders that have been completed by our facilities division in FY23. 1710, number is basically the amount of vertical height displacement repairs that have been corrected, that were identified in our ADA transition plan. And what I mean by vertical height displacement, that's like two pieces of sidewalk panels come together, and one's raised, it's a trip hazard. If it's greater than a certain distance, then it's classified as a trip hazard, and it's got to be corrected. So we're working through those. 13.2, the number of megawatts generated in March by solar panels that are on town facilities. 160, number of acres of grounds maintained by the department. 122, the number of metric tons of CO2 offset by solar power generation. And then 15% reduction in energy consumption at the connector building due to BAS installation. So about our values in action, dedication. Our employees are extremely dedicated. In the picture there, you see, you know, we only, not only maintain the ground, but we have to get up and do tree trimming along our greenways to make sure that we don't have any dangers for our residents that are walking. Integrity, this is a great picture that Cameron sent me, and it's, he stopped and got a turtle out of the road. So thank you, Cameron. Courtesy, we have Kevin there talking to a resident in the park. Just making sure, you know, that personal interaction with our residents. You know, Public Works, along with your police and fire, they are the face of the town. You know, they are the employees that interact with our residents on a daily basis. So they take the time to do so and help them when they can help and assist. And then innovation, we have Eric in engineering and then Stephen trying to work on automated gate, trying to figure out what that looks like and why it's not working. So that just goes to show innovation and collaboration with other departments. So did you know the department has experience in 20 other states and Vietnam? We have over 348 years of service among the employees within the department. The town has received almost $167,000 from Duke Energy for rebates due to solar installation and also completing an energy audit for town facilities. Many people don't realize it, but public work staff are responsible removing dead animals out of the road. Animal gets hit, they call our office and we respond. We empty trash cans on greenways and in parks on Mondays and Fridays, make sure that they're serviced. Our oldest employee is 71, and our youngest is 25. I fall somewhere in between that, not at the peak or the low one. And one of our employees in Public Works has obtained five college degrees and even taught middle school earlier in their career. And the stewardship program, I can just give a shout out to Steve Dickson and the work that he's done in stewardship. That came back to our department from Parks and Recreation last year. And he has done a lot of work trying to get the number of volunteers up, working with those, establishing, you know, protocol and structure in stewardship. So thank you, Steve, for that. So just us in action, you know, just highlighting staff. Some more pictures of staff in action. And some posing in the middle there. Oh, I don't know how that got in there. Oh, I'm not sure. But we felt like, you know, Public Works, we are heroes because we feel like fire and police need heroes as well, and so we're their heroes. So thank you, Chief. So that brings us to a close of the presentation. I have left with you an image in the background of our Public Works complex, conceptual what that looks like. That was intentional, just to leave you with that, so we don't lose sight of that. And also that Public Works are considered as first responders. At this point in time, I'll entertain any questions from council.
The future is indeed bright. Councilmember Scott Johnson, please, will get us started, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Thank you. Congratulations on the excellent presentation.
Thank you.
I see a lot of themes that are common to what I expected. It's very nice to see. The one takeaway that I wasn't aware of is that the Public Works Department are first responders. I think that is a huge message about the criticality of the department and how vital it is to the town. So thank you for highlighting that. I think we need to highlight that other places, too.
Thank you. That was put into law when President Bush was in office. He recognized Public Works by employees at that point in time as first responders.
Excellent, excellent. A matter of other importance is that that video is surely awesome. And I was wondering if that is going to go on the town's YouTube channel so that other...
I would certainly hope so. I mean, I don't know. We have to speak to our communications department.
Yes, of course.
We'll, we'll help.
As well as social media, because each of the videos are rather lovely. And it's important that we train and educate the public on all the great things that not only Public Works, but those other two departments, the police and fire, you know, the great things that they do as well.
They do great things, yeah.
Yes, yes. Overall, I really appreciate you sharing the highlights of, you know, the important things that we do, and the pictures were wonderful because it looks like you're having fun all the time. But I realize that this new facility is one of the top priorities, and we really do need to make sure that we have our department poised for the future and the future needs of the town. So thank you for that. We appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Fender, please, followed by Councilmember Rowe.
Yeah, great presentation, and I love the video and the theme of many hands because it alludes to that quote, "Many hands make light work." So I like, I liked the message that that sends across, and so I do hope it gets out there on social media. Couple questions. So you planted over three new trees last year. How many going to plant this year?
We don't have a number as far as identified at this point in time, but I can assure you that we continue to identify areas where we can enhance the tree canopy within, on the town property. So I can assure you that we will continue to look for opportunities, and we will plant trees when we have, you know, when we identify areas that we can enhance that.
Okay, yeah. And I really enjoyed participating in that activity, that one Saturday. And I think it's an excellent opportunity for volunteers to contribute to as well. And then another question I had was, you talked about like one of the challenges being fleet replacement, but you have overcome, you've worked through it and overcome it. So what went into that? How, what strategy did you use?
Just, you know, for fleet replacement, you know, our first, you know, process when we look at replacing fleet is to do something that, from a sustainable standpoint. You know, we look at if it's just a, if it's not a take-home vehicle, then we'll look to kind of true, a full electric vehicle meet that need. Most, all the vehicles that we have worked through replacement since my tenure year have been on the emergency services side. So it's been all PD and then one fire vehicle. We, in attempt to try to get hybrid vehicles, that's what we had been ordering, and we had ordered them a couple of times, and then we did not get any vehicles because for council to order based on, they said you couldn't make them. And we had no assurance that we knew when vehicles ordering window was going to open up. Keep in mind, once you order a vehicle, you know, you place an order, it may be 12 to 14 months before you actually receive the vehicle after you make the order. And then you spend another three months getting it upfit. So there's a lead time for that, once you order that vehicle, before it's able to be provided in the service. So we worked with town management and police to identify some vehicles that met our specification that were fully combustible engines, so they were not hybrid vehicles. But we had to look at the critical need of the community and making sure that our officers and our police department had the necessary tools and equipment to perform their jobs at the level which they needed to. So we were able to identify some vehicles in a dealer in South Carolina, and we were able to secure enough vehicles to get us through that critical period so we can move forward, we get those vehicles replaced. So that's how we've overcome that initial challenge. But also, I want to thank Town Council for your support. At your last, or one of your last meetings, you approved the transfer, the use of $250,000. And so what we were able to do there, once that ordering window opened up, we went and advanced our purchase of our replacement vehicles for next fiscal year. So we've got those already ordered, PO has been issued. So that way gets us out in front of everybody else that's going to be ordering vehicles in July as part of the standard budgetary process that municipal governments go through. So we were able to work with town management and through council for your support to get those ordered. So we're taking some necessary steps to think outside of the box, what we can do differently. Obviously, our priority is to be sustainable, but at the end of the day, it's about protecting the community, and sometimes you have to make tough decisions.
Yeah, I understand. So were there the most recent vehicles, will those be hybrid?
Yes, ma'am. The last five that we have ordered are hybrid vehicles.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rowe, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, well, I had a question about the fleets, but that question's already been answered. And I just wanted to say, I just wanted to thank you so much for how outstanding your department is. I actually, because I run so much through Church Street, I often see Kevin Kelly when I'm running and see like, I'm probably one of the residents they stop and talk to as well. But I always notice just how friendly they are. And, you know, I want to thank Kimberly and the team that was out there on Green Day. It's just really great for our staff to be out there interacting with residents. So I'm completely, you know, I think we're going to do whatever we can to support your division, your department. And the final thing I'll say is, I like this idea of working cross-departmentally, and in your presentation, you used innovation. So I think there's a lot of opportunities to work, just like Smart Morseville, that's part of our sustainability program. How do we, you know, how do we leverage smart innovation for building systems automation? So it's kind of nice to see this moving across the different departments. But I think Public Works is a great place we can even get more momentum in that. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, you know, it's funny because you, in the video, you say that your department, that you're under the radar, and it's so true because when you, you know, you see these little snippets of video, and every single one of them I recognize as someplace that I've seen Public Works personnel around town, putting up a sign, putting up a street sign, you know, taking with a vehicle, whatever you all are doing. And I really appreciate these periodic reminders to council of exactly what you all are doing because, you know, I, it's such a large department and the breadth of the department. And you're, you know, the way that the sustainability effort of the town is centered in that department. It, you know, I do think that it's really important that, not just council, but that the public get these reminders because when you see, especially when you see, you know, a large capital expense, like a public works building looming on the horizon, and, you know, it's going to be a huge expense for the town. But the, the, the cost of not doing a project like that is, is almost, it's not really an exaggeration to say that the cost of not doing a project like that is the complete breakdown of the town. Because, you know, it would be immediately apparent as soon as you all don't have the facilities and the equipment and the personnel that you need, the town will see almost an immediate downgrade in services, in infrastructure, and quality of life. And so I, you know, I do, I really appreciate when you, I appreciate the time that, you know, and the effort that everybody put into the video, of course. And I think that's really digestible and a smart way to get it across to the public, like everything that you all are doing. And I do hope we get that out extensively on social media. I know myself and my colleagues will promote it as much as we can through our networks. But, yeah, I really, you know, I don't know if I have a question so much as just a thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
You don't need a question, as long as I'm keeping the compliments going, right?
Keep them coming, keep them going.
No, but, you know, I did, I did want to make the point about the public works facility, that the public is going to hear a lot of discussion of that facility and the different financing methods that we're going to, you know, the financing vehicles that we're going to be using to pay for it. And this, you know, the reminder that these are the kind of services that will be supported by a project, like a capital project like that, I think it's very timely. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, please, followed by Mayor Pretend Gara Miller.
So, sir, we have a couple of comments, but first I have a sort of a question. You took down the fact that you have one opening in the streets division that's been open since you came on board. But you actually told two positions, so you're obviously another one that just came over two, according to that chart. So I just, let us know what we can do to help. I don't, I get, I get some concern about that, that you've had an opening that long. Because I'm not aware typically that our openings on... because I'm not aware, typically, that our openings on, um, other, in other departments have been open that long. So, that was kind of concerning to me. So, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that, and...
I'll be happy to, and I will, uh, you know, each one of our positions, I think this was talked about one of your, uh, most recent budget work sessions, is town positions are reviewed, uh, basically every three years. And so, we just went through that process, uh, this, this year, so part of the recommended budget that, uh, our town manager will be bringing forward, uh, to council for consideration will be to, it looked at public works positions. So, I certainly think that's a step in the right direction. I think, you know, that, that'll make us more competitive. So, I think that's going to be where we need to go. And then obviously the things that are happening for, you know, from a recruitment standpoint, just the small things that recently, the last council meeting you adopted, the changes to the HR policy. You know, have somebody come here that doesn't have to start at zero years of service to start earning vacation time anymore, and they can be, be based on the years of service they've got in the system, as far as the local government. That's, that's big, I mean, that's, you know, other people are not doing that. So, I think as we continue to enhance our benefits, uh, certainly, and we look at our competitive pay, I think we're moving in the right direction. So, I'm pleased with steps that are being taken. I think it's, and then, you know, having the right people in the right positions to, to, to also help attract and attain, uh, obtain and, uh, keep talent, it's gonna be big for us as well. So, I'm, um, very optimistic about the direction we're moving in for public works.
Okay, okay, that's good to hear.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that, I appreciate that. And you're the right person, I have confidence in you, and you're the right person to, to lead that charge forward. So, I, I appreciate that. And, um, you, you know, you are right when you said, um, this department touches the lives of every person in this town, and, um, there's a lot of work that goes on, and I love the advancing quality of life for all, um, because that is 100% what you all do, whether we all realize that as citizens or not, and, and the business community. So, um, I really, um, respect and appreciate the work that comes out of this department, and I'm really happy that you have so many folks here from, um, public works, because I get to tell you personally, um, and Jeffrey has heard me say this, um, I've said this over the years, I said it recently, council was invited to, uh, to have breakfast with the department heads, and I let the department's head know, know this, um, but you all, um, you all in public works are the reason, um, that we love living in the town of Morrisville. You make the town of Morrisville a great place to live, to raise a family, to, um, to have a business, um, you, you are the reason this is a, a, a great town. So, um, I really applaud you, and, you know, I've been on council, I've lived here for 27 years, I've been on council for 25 years. I am incredibly proud of this department, um, and you all should be incredibly proud of what you do, um, every, each and every day, sometimes 24 hours a day. And I love, um, also the fact that you shared with us that public works is a first responder. You are first responders, you are out there, um, at the forefront of everything and anything, any disaster, anything, um, you, you all are there for us during good weather, bad weather, so, I, I really appreciate you sharing that, and I would, I would say we need to share that more often, and make sure the, the public is, um, aware of the fabulous job, um, that you all do, so, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor Pretend Garamella, please.
It's always very hard to speak after this.
I got a lot of passion, so I gotta, I gotta share.
One thing I'll certainly say is, A, as others have said, I do not know public works as first responder, but I think it is more than a first responder, I think it's the bone behind the fire and the police and the town to really run through. You know, you're creating, um, pretty much a state where without you guys, they are inoperable. You know, let it vehicles, let it be road, infrastructure, not just the first responder, even for us, like, you know, if there are issues, you guys are the first people who come gracefully and do it, and I think you are the only people who come with no 911 calls, you know, because usually they come for emergencies, you guys come for something which is needed, and importantly so. But I also want to acknowledge, uh, you're very intentional in keeping this particular picture at the back, but I want everyone to also understand the current building that you guys are in. It is not the best, it is, I've visited a couple of times, it is, I have, I have, I don't want to use words, but I would certainly say a lot of, it, you guys deserve better. That's what I would say, you know? And, uh, so, this is perfect, and I think I agree with Wiki where we had to start talking about it, it's not always the fire and the police, I like fire more than police, like, you know, the chief knows that, but, but still, this is important for us to ensure this project, you know, gets done, completed, so that you guys can have a workable place than what it is now, you know? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I, I agree with that, just starting where Mayor Pretend started, that, um, I've been visiting the Cary Depot over on James Jackson for years, because I used to live in Cary, so I did, there's a piece with them, and it'd be nice to have a, a newish building that's got all the bells and whistles and stuff like that, so I'm looking forward to supporting this effort. As a first responder, I think we should get y'all some badges, so you can practice your softball and be part of that in Holly Springs, um, so that would be something to be part of the battle of the badges.
I'm not too sure about that, Mayor.
I see some very strong people over there, I think they could probably, uh, hold their own. But, um, I have some thoughts, uh, Councilmember Fender asked about how many trees you're coming up on this year perhaps, and you answered it very nicely. I, I'm like, I like the data, so if you have any kind of metrics, uh, for any upcoming presentations about what your goals are, like how many trees, or the CO2 offsets, things like that, that would help us to, um, really share with the residents what your goals are, how you're going against them, and why you would need more funding, like how much more tree canopy do we want to move, um, things like that. So, I'm all about that. Also, I appreciate your challenges with the fleet replacements, I love that you were so persistent and were moving towards hybrids, I think that's so important, um, because like I said, there's no planet B. So, y'all are the tip of the spear when it comes to sustainability efforts, um, really applaud everything that's being done. We are moving really quickly with limited resources, so I think that whatever we can do to keep pouring resources into that, um, is gonna be really important, and you do touch all the departments, like IT, which you showed at the end there, you're foundational to all of us. So, thank you very much for all the work you do. Like Councilmember Johnson said, um, you are the reason that it's such a great place to live in Morrisville, so we really appreciate what you do every day. I love seeing you all around, I like to say hi. You're always a smiling face, and you're always working really hard for us. The parks are great because of y'all, um, and our residents really enjoy them. So, thank you very much for your presentation, you're doing a great job, keep it up, I look forward to the next 19 months and everything you're gonna do and that. Did anyone else have anything else? Okay.
I'll just say thank you to town council for your continued support, uh, thank you for town management for giving us the opportunity to highlight our department. I'd like to personally thank staff for what you do every day, thank you for the ones that are here, I know obviously others had obligations, we couldn't get everybody here, but, uh, we have a, a great showing, and so I'm very proud of the ones that are here. I know they chose to be here, uh, so, I commend you for being here. And also to Rocks, uh, for, uh, being, uh, brains behind the video. So, we had like 14,000 different ideas, and so, uh, I'm glad we landed where we did. So, thank you to Rocks and the Communications Department, uh, for their support, uh, and getting us a very successful video that I think we can show multiple times and many times to promote public works. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff, um, I, I think, you know, with all the three videos already out, you should send a poll, you know, which one is better, and let the people decide, you know?
I appreciate that recommendation, I, I think we know the answer to that already, without a poll, but, I mean, I'm certainly open to the idea.
I think you should hold that poll until council produces our own video, which I think we can all see should be like right around the corner, because I mean, that's gonna be clearly right around my eyes.
I think it's a great idea, it's a great idea.
The videos keep getting better, is what I always like to say, each and everyone, so thank you very much, Rocks. At this time, we'd like to invite Josh Michael to come forward to present the traffic analysis for Church Street.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, uh, Josh Michael, Planner 2, and I'll be giving you the TOD traffic analysis for Church Street. I imagine this might have some discussion afterwards, but I would request that if you'll hold all the questions till the conclusion of the presentation. So, we did break the presentation into four components, so part one will just be the origin of the request with a little background information. Part two will be how we selected traffic engineer and the scope of the project. Part three will be an overview by, uh, Kevin Dean from Kimley Horn, and then part four will be staff recommendation and next steps. So, to begin, um, give the origin, during the town council meetings held on September 12th and September 26th, directives were issued to staff to conduct an evaluation of Church Street with the intent to ascertain if new cross-sections are necessary for the CTP. On October 10th, staff provided town council with an overview of a TIA versus CTP and the role of each. And then at the November 14th town council meeting, town council indicated that this traffic study would need to be complete with any recommendations or cross-sections identified before issuing approval of the TOD zoning plan. Simultaneously, at that November 14th meeting, uh, staff presented an outline of the Church Street study, and, uh, what was presented for that Church Street corridor study is that it will collect background info, background traffic data in the area count, traffic counts, and then it would analyze the results. Based on the results, the consultant would recommend road cross-sections designed to accommodate varying levels of service, and then staff would then propose a CTP plan, uh, CTP amendment if necessary. At the November 14th, 2023 meeting, town council specified a review of the TOD zoning plan once the Church Street study had been completed, and approval of the TOD and zoning plan articulates a strategic vision for the town, which sets the stage for the formulation of amendments to the UDO. These amendments will mandate that forthcoming TOD development is consistent with the established vision of the town. And finally, at this meeting, town council emphasized the importance of the conclusions drawn from the Church Tree, Church Street traffic analysis in mitigating potential knowledge deficits concerning future challenges within the district. Moving on to part two, which is the selection and scope, so we did contact our on-call engineering firm, Kimley Horn and Associates, um, they have institutional knowledge in Morrisville, they work with on lots of different projects, um, they also said that they would complete this in a timely manner, uh, in accordance with what, uh, town council and staff requested. Some of the established scope was to attend preliminary study with town and, or preliminary scoping meeting with town and CDOT representatives, conduct site visits and collect background data on current traffic conditions and planned developments, gather 24-hour and peak hour traffic counts at key locations. And some of the parameters that were established was the inclusion of the Airport Boulevard Extension, which goes from Church Street to Town Hall, and McCrimmon Parkway Overpass project that will be beginning this year, hopefully. Use of the Triangle Regional Model to develop future corridor volumes, and evaluation of exists, existing year traffic to the 2050 build-out. And then finally, comparison with NC DOT's level of service D. The study area that was established, uh, I'll just move my mouse a little, so, so it goes from Everett Fields North, then from, and this is the traffic corridor, the, uh, corridor segments, Everett Fields North, Everett Fields to TOD West, corridor from TOD West to McCrimmon, the corridor from McCrimmon to TOD South, TOD South to the Airport Extension, and then Airport Extension to Tray Brook, and Tray Brook South. Simultaneously, Kimley Horn did indicate that they would do intersection analysis for three key intersections, and those intersections were Everett Fields at Church Street, McCrimmon at Church Street, and Tray Brook at Church Street. Working with the consultant, the recommendations, we decided were to develop general recommendations for roadway and operational improvements, considering future network with Airport Boulevard Extension and McCrimmon Parkway Overpass, to propose new road cross-sections if required, aligning with the town CTP, and then submit those recommendations and propose cross-sections for NC DOT review. And just for reference, this is the current cross-section in the CTP of Church Street as it stands today, with the 12-foot lanes, uh, five-foot minimum verge, and five-foot sidewalks. And with that, pass it over to Kevin.
Good evening, my name's Kevin Dean, I'm a traffic engineer with Kimley Horn, uh, our office is at 421 Fayetteville Street in Raleigh. So, we're gonna go into a little bit more detail on the study, um, and our recommendations, so apologies for any repeats for what Josh has already outlined, but just want to walk through a little bit more detail, so. As Josh mentioned, uh, we started out with existing traffic count collection, both your standards and NC DOT require those to be collected when schools are in session, so Wake County Public Schools were in session when those counts were performed. Um, and then we, um, we worked on calibrating the Triangle Regional Model, so you'll see that shortened to TRM throughout portions of the presentation, but Triangle Regional Model, um, is a tool that's been developed that projects, uh, future traffic volumes throughout Wake County and surrounding counties, and what that does is it incorporates land use data, um, that's updated regularly from different municipalities. So, as you and Cary and Apex and Chapel Hill update your land use plans, that data is fed back into the Triangle Regional Model, and that's what informs, uh, future volume projections in the area. And so, uh, as Josh mentioned, uh, some of the other things that go into are making sure that the Airport Boulevard Extension is, uh, is accounted for, um, then also the work with, um, on McCrimmon Parkway, um, and then, uh, looking at projects in the area that also need to be reflected, and then all of that's turned into a traffic forecast, y'all will see those when you have, um, municipal or NC DOT projects where it looks like the, the T-intersection with a bunch of arrows and, and, and traffic volumes all over the place, so that's what gets developed. And those volumes inform not only, um, the projected volumes on individual segments of the roadway, but at the intersections themselves as well, and so that was developed as part of this process. But the meat of the analysis was comparing those to segmental capacity thresholds. So, typically, when you hear someone talking about a traffic impact analysis, um, you hear intersections graded on level service A through F, right? We talk about that regularly, your standards, uh, talk about what, um, developments have to mitigate to, um, when we look at segmental level of service, um, NC DOT only provides a standard level of service D, so it's relatively binary evaluation of segmental capacity, roadway is either meeting capacity, or it's overcapacity based on those volumes. But one of the other, so, NC DOT's data, um, is actually based, or their, their standards are from 2011, and so what some of the industry has moved towards is FDOT, Florida Department of Transportation, um, their data is a little bit more nuanced, and so they update their data annually when they're looking at capacity thresholds, um, and they also do, um, they have a little bit more nuance in roadway classifications and location, so instead of being relatively generic about, uh, major thoroughfare in the Piedmont at 35 miles an hour, FDOT does a, a good job about identifying if a roadway is in an urban core... FDOT does a good job about identifying if a roadway is in an urban core or a rural area. And so we used FDOT data as well for comparison because we wanted to see how those two may compare. And so going back to what Josh has shown, the, the general corridor, we looked from north of Everett Fields through Traybrook, Traybrook Drive. The volumes on the right are the projected 2050 traffic volumes from the forecast. So again, those 2050 volumes are based on data from the Triangle Regional Model. And then some of the adjustments that we looked at based on corridor-specific inputs, like the Airport Boulevard Extension, McCrimmon Parkway improvements. So we jumped to the results. So what you'll see on this table, you've got the individual segments. And so those are what was referenced on the previous slide. And then towards the right of that chart, you'll see NC DOT and Florida DOT, two-lane and four-lane capacities. So the 12,500 and 25,100 are capacity data from NC DOT for two and four-lane roadways. Similarly, Florida DOT has two and four-lane capacities, but those are, as you'll notice, significantly higher, 17,600 and 36,100 for those same corridors. And what you'll see is that when we're looking at the NC DOT data, the two-lane roadway, the, the volumes we're projecting in 2050 generally exceed DOT standards for two-lane roadways. When you look at the four-lane standards, those are all, the, the four-lane roadway is well above capacity based on those 2050 volumes. Conversely, when you look at Florida DOT, nearly all of the roadway segments are accommodated in the two-lane section based on Florida DOT data. And then the four-lane capacity is obviously even much greater. And so this is the data. These are the reviews that we performed when we were looking at corridor volumes and segmental analysis. That brings us to our recommendation for a two-lane section. Now, there's been a lot of discussion, so we're not trying to minimize this, but getting, trying to get through the presentation and then allow y'all to answer questions. So what we've looked at, Florida DOT data is more nuanced than NC DOT data. It's more recent. It's got more classifications to consider. And so we think that's a valuable tool to use. And so that suggests that two-lane section is reasonable for Church Street. Both NC DOT and FDOT data suggest that the four lanes would be well in excess of what the corridor would need. And we look at the built environment along Church Street. You have numerous sections where there is already development on both sides of the corridor. And you have a two-lane roadway with a center left turn lane. And so when we look at what an appropriate section would be through TOD, while we certainly want to make sure that that works, we also want to be cognizant of how that might transition into adjacent portions of the corridor and not burdening existing development. And so all of these combine for our recommendation for the two-lane section. I would note that when we're looking at, at projects like TOD, the goal is that these become less auto-centric and are more receptive to things like bike and pedestrian and transit use. And so that's one of the reasons that in most of these cases, the typical sections through TOD areas look, don't look like US1 as completely controlled access freeways and look more inviting to multimodal and transit interactions. So that, that led to our recommendation. We have coordinated with NC DOT. It's not their usual policy to review CTP level analyses, but we did discuss with them the typical section, sticking with the two-lane section or even where a, a left turn lane would be needed along the corridor. That's consistent generally with your current CTP and the two-lane section that Josh had on the screen right before I walked up. And then the additional left turn lane is consistent with what DOTs use to on other portions of the corridor. But the big, big thing I'll stress here, a big thing the staff has already mentioned, and I'm sure Josh will revisit this, is that it is typical that traffic impact analyses, TIAs for specific projects, are the mechanisms that improvements get made. So the CTP becomes the baseline improvements that need to be made. And then when a site plan is submitted, anything that comes remotely close to the, the density that's being proposed for TOD warrants a traffic study. And then that is performed when we know the plan, we know the built environment, we know what projects are coming in the area, and then any other improvements that are needed get addressed at that time. And so that goes through town staff review. Y'all have a third-party consultant who reviews traffic studies on your behalf as well. And then obviously NC DOT. So we believe that the two-lane section in the CTP is appropriate and that future analyses of this site would, would be appropriate to identify any improvements that might be needed beyond that. So.
All right. And based off what Kimley Horn came up with, the staff recommendation. So staff have conducted a preliminary analysis of the existing right-of-way and the recommended two-lane cross-section with and without a turn, a center turn lane. Under either scenario, the right-of-way dedication would not be needed to accommodate the recommended improvements. To verify this, of course, a professional survey would need to be completed. After reviewing the transportation analysis, a four-lane expansion is not recommended as the primary recommendation centers on enhancing turning movements for adjacent properties. Accordingly, staff recommended improvements should be guided by the findings of a project-specific TIA rather than being predicated on the TOD vision. Finally, staff recommend the CTP not be amended to include these cross-sections. And as far as the next steps, should Town, Town Council agree with the staff recommendation, the next steps will be devoted on the TOD sub-area plan. And should council decide that a CTP amendment is desired, staff will need to present cross-sections to PZB and Town Council for approval. And that will be the conclusion of the presentation. Be happy to take any questions. We also have our transportation planner, Caleb Alred here, so any of us can answer any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'd like to start with Councilmember Robati, followed by Mayor Pretend Garamilla.
If we go back to slide 16. So one thing that you did say that struck me was that the, that the roads would be designed for multimodal travel, including bikes and such. But these, these roads don't appear to include a bike lane, do they?
They do not. So the multimodal component of TOD, I believe, is being held for a different part of the TOD vision, if I believe, if I remember that correctly. Also, I believe in this part of the corridor, especially with TOD South, there's a greenway planned on the east side of Church Street. And so the, the vision would be that those type of accommodations would likely happen off-street, kind of behind the curb, and that bicycle traffic may not be in the cross-section, in, in the roadway.
Okay.
So there'd be a, I'm sorry to interrupt. There would be accommodations to make sure that those, those uses could be accommodated, accommodations be accommodated, sorry. But that they wouldn't necessarily be addressed in, inside the curb on-street. So.
Okay, so I, I think that it's fine to say that we're going to rely on the greenways for some of the bike traffic. I think that to say that the greenways would offload all bike traffic, especially if we're, if we're basing the recommendations on the fact that people would use their bikes more. I'm not sure that's entirely realistic. I would like to see, any further data that you can offer on that would be very helpful. Oh, I see. I'm about to get some further data.
Michelle Stekel Planning Director, just to chime in on that, when we were developing the scope with Kimley Horn, we made a decision not to include bike ped. And we did that for a number of reasons, not because we don't believe it's important, we believe it's critically important, particularly along this corridor. And one of your CTP action items is to evaluate it. But we were primarily looking to get the council an answer to the question of should this be a two-lane or four-lane cross-section? I will say costs start to escalate very quickly when you add in the bike ped component and timeframes are extended. You brought up the question of is it a greenway? Is it a side path? Is it a multi-use path? How do these connections happen? How do those connections work with all the other multimodal facilities? When you start expanding the scope of that, you're starting to get into public engagements and it's, you start peeling off layers and it becomes a much larger project, much more expensive and much more timely to complete. So we figured we would hold off on that until we get to that CTP action item. Knowing that the current CTP does say when TOD is developed, make sure there are appropriate connections and work with that developer to at least connect to that site. But on the long list of CTP action items is to look at bike ped. We just did not include it in the scope for this project.
Okay, so you're saying that the, you're not saying that, or maybe you're saying both, but you're, you're saying that the scope of the project to evaluate this as a two-lane or a four-lane road escalates if we include, should there be bike lanes and should if we, and also that the scope of the project, should we include bike lanes, et cetera, along the road would also escalate? Or are you specifically talking about the study?
I'm saying that if we were to, it would, this study was specifically looking at should it be two lanes, should it be four lanes? To add bike ped to the scope of this study would add a considerable amount more time and cost. And you wouldn't want to do public engagement. So we were trying to make this a very focused study to answer the questions we were getting from council about the TOD.
Okay, that definitely makes sense. I appreciate that. So the other question I have, I guess, is really just more of a, a gut check because you're saying that, if I understand this correctly, you're saying that Church Street should remain two lanes and that in some cases, there should be a turning lane in the middle, but that two lanes is adequate for Church Street all the way down, even once TOD is built. And I'm saying that I, I do not understand how that can be true. I see the numbers and I, I understand the, the Florida data and the North Carolina. I understand all of that. But I'm saying that just from a, a gut check realism type of lens on the situation, I don't understand how it can be true that the two lanes that we have, that's what we have now. And if you're saying that that's going to be adequate with all of the development that's coming, I, I, I'm going to need that explained to me. I'm going to need it explained to me how these numbers can possibly be correct. And I'm not, you know, I, it's not that I don't believe the numbers. I do. I, I'm, I'm looking at them, but I don't understand how that can be true.
First, as a traffic engineer, you don't ever have to apologize for questioning the numbers we give. That's part of the job. So we're fine with that. But what, what I'll say is that in many cases, when we look at corridors, the controlling aspect of a corridor is often the intersection and not the segment. So if you're out on Church Street today, in my experience, the controlling part of Church Street is the intersection at McCrimmon Parkway.
I agree with that.
And so what, what is anticipated to happen between now and the time that TOD would get built out would be significant improvements as part of the McCrimmon Parkway project. Because what you have today, and I'm sure you've all seen it, is you only have a single through lane. If you're going out towards 54, you have a single through lane. Sometimes people cheat over in the right turn lane and then try to race you across. That's a whole different thing. But the intersection of Church Street and McCrimmon Parkway generally controls what happens on the corridor. It becomes the, it becomes the bottleneck. But when that intersection is widened so that there are two through lanes in each direction, exclusive left and right turn lanes in each direction, there's another lane northbound on Church Street that gets added. Those improvements allow more time to be given to critical movements at the intersection. So instead of needing so much time to process all the traffic that's trying to go through the intersection on McCrimmon, you're able to clear a lot more of the traffic volume coming off of Church Street. So what we see is that from a, just the purely segmental perspective, we think two lanes is appropriate. But the TIA's job when that happens would be to look at, do turn lanes need to be longer? Signal timing, signal phasing adjustments need to be made at that intersection to make sure that in the peak hours, those are addressed. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a blend of what does the segment need? And then when all of that traffic inevitably stops, how do you address it when it has to stop?
Okay, so what you're, just to make sure that I understand what you're saying. You're saying that right now at the intersection of Church Street and McCrimmon, we, I know this to be true. There's quite often gridlock where, you know, a light turns red, turns green and then turns red again, and nothing has moved because nothing can move.
Yep.
You're saying that the, that the improvements to McCrimmon Parkway will take care of the, of the traffic going down McCrimmon.
Yes, ma'am.
So that there won't be that backlog anymore and that when, when traffic comes up Church Street, it will be able to clear onto McCrimmon going right and left and straight at that intersection in a timely manner because of the intersection. So, so the problem isn't the, the two lanes, that, that Church Street is two lanes. The problem is that nothing in those two lanes can get through the intersection. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's our expectation. And that when we see 54 at McCrimmon Parkway controlling because it's difficult to get traffic across the railroad tracks and process all of that. When that's an overpass, and once you're through the Church Street intersection, you're not touching the brakes again until you get to Perimeter Park or wherever the next intersection is, then there's no real potential for spillback there because there is no intersection downstream within such a close distance. So you're exactly right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Pretend Garamilla, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Thanks, Stephen. You know, I will not go easily on these questions. I want to go back to the slide of 2050 that you have shown.
This one?
Yes, perfect. I, you're projecting 2050. I would like a chart with the current state minus the consideration of McCrimmon Parkway and how does it look today without no considerations? And I want your input on that because I want to acknowledge what the current situation is, not assumptions of those things to be done.
We didn't make that chart. I mean, we certainly could. I'm flipping through the, so the current volume. So current daily volumes on Church Street. So I've got two different segments that I can give you, sorry, three different segments that I can get you. Church Street between McCrimmon and Everett Fields is approximately 7,500 vehicles per day. Church Street near Traybrook Drive is approximately 4,500 vehicles per day. And Church Street south of Traybrook Drive is 3,500 vehicles per day.
Okay, but how does that really go into consideration? If you go back the slide above, you have said in one bit about that too. I don't know. Where, where is it? Yeah, like this one, right?
Yep.
So you have put the TRM, you have put the pending projects and Airport Boulevard and McCrimmon, all those things into factor.
Sure.
For a second, just take all those things out because that's not existing right now.
Sure.
So we don't know when McCrimmon will be done.
Sure.
You know, DOT says, I've been, you know, whatever it is. But I want to know the current state based on your results without these considerations. Does there, is there a choking point? Because that's where the people see it is. And, and I want your data to also kind of quantify that with the current scenario.
So you're looking at a daily volume comparison to capacity?
Yes.
And, and I think that would be if, so Church Street at 7,500 vehicles per day north of McCrimmon Parkway. If we go back to, if you'll permit me, if we go back and we compare that volume to the, if we just compare these to the NC DOT two-lane capacity, 12,500. McCrimmon Parkway is roughly 65% or Church Street roughly 65% of that capacity. It drops below 50% of that capacity as you go further down Church Street. Compared to Florida DOT data, obviously it'd be a much lower percentage. So that, that is the existing condition. Those are volumes today that were collected late last year while schools were in session without any of those other factors applied. That is raw traffic count data.
And what does that say? Like there is a choke point or there's not a choke point?
So that suggests that the corridor is not overcapacity today. Though if you look at the intersection of McCrimmon and Church, we would find that that intersection today without, with today's volumes and out any improvements is already operating at level of service D in the AM peak hour. So there's, there's an acknowledgement that we're not seeing level service A at the intersection level, but that the daily volumes when compared to the capacity data, those volumes are still under capacity for today's environment.
I have a hard time because if you see McCrimmon from Church, from 54
Sure.
to Church Street, peak time, forget about the school, you know, school, no one goes during the school time. There's only few school buses.
Sure.
Let's be honest on that. It is bumper to bumper, all the way from Perimeter all the way to Church Street. And our signals don't work. I have told 100 times that those signals don't work. And I hear from all our people saying that they're working towards it.
Sure.
As no one would. I had to wait three signals there to just move it. So when I am an everyday traveler there and I see the bottleneck and I'm not able to understand how the data proves otherwise that there is not. to understand how the data proves otherwise that there is not, and I'm having a hard time understanding it, then if, if your data is really correct, and your assumptions are right, I should be having a free pass, right? Why am I getting stuck?
I don't think you should have a, I don't, I don't, I wouldn't expect you to have a free pass at all through the McCrimmon and Church Street intersection. I think that goes back to our discussion about how the NC 54 intersection at McCrimmon Parkway controls and causes congestion that spills back. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be, even without data, which is how most traffic engineers operate anyways, I'd be happy to say that McCrimmon Parkway is probably over capacity east of Church Street, because it's necked down to a two-lane roadway and otherwise accommodates four-lane traffic on either side of, you know, west of Church or east of 54. I think when we're looking at volumes on Church Street and what that corridor can accommodate, I think today, based on our data, Church Street is under capacity.
I, I get that, but again, then the choke point is McCrimmon too.
Absolutely.
And so, so, so it doesn't matter, like, you have like a open lane, but the choke point is where people, they don't care Church Street is in capacity or not.
Yep.
As long as they can go from point A to point B with no, you know, blocks involved, right?
Sure.
So that is not the case right now. And, and your assumption is, the 2050 is not convincing for me, overall I understand, but I would like to see 2024, 2034, like, you know, 2044. What does it really basically show, based on your TRM reports, assumptions? How is it building up? Like, is it the clock coming down with an, and I want each assumption, assumption of McCrimmon, you know, a flyover done, what does that change? Airport, you know, put in, in place, what does that change? Because giving a holistic view of 2050, like that's 25 years from now, and still saying, you know, two-lane is A-OK, I get it, but the pain points are not getting shown here of what is causing it and how it will get elevated, it's just assumptions of those projects being completed.
Sure, and, and that's fair. I do think that if we're going to look 25 years in the future, and I know you're talking about an iterative review, if we're going to look 25 years in the future and account for significant growth and the potential that anything to the size of TOD could happen, I think we, it, I think it would be also reasonable to expect that significant infrastructure improvements have happened, like the McCrimmon Parkway improvements. And so the, the, the difficult thing, certainly when we're looking at a corridor, is if it's miserable to drive through an area today, how can that possibly be better? How can we add all this traffic and it possibly be better in the future? I think though, when we're not comparing, if we were comparing existing lineage to future volumes, y'all wouldn't have even needed a traffic study to prove that, right? But if we're gonna, if we're gonna compare 2050 volumes to an environment where the Airport Boulevard extension has gotten out to Church Street and made an, an additional east-west road through there, and if we believe DOT that construction starts within the next few years and we get the McCrimmon Parkway improvements in place, that completely changes what the corridor looks like.
Yeah, but that's exactly the reason I, I want, you know, either from the staff or this one, assumption in five years, McCrimmon is done, how does that improve? My assumption, airport, you know, extension is done in 10 years, what is that assumption? I like, I'm not seeing that kind of a data, because I'm just looking at a blanket, 2050, always be good. That's all I'm seeing, but that doesn't resonate very well with the residents who are living in the corridor.
Sure. I would think at the same ti, if I may, I would think at the same time, projects at the scale of TOD don't happen overnight? And so just like you would step into growth with TOD.
Again, this has nothing to do with TOD, okay? Like, I want to ensure the area is good so that the TOD will not be an issue in the future, because right now, the choke points which are there, the current scenarios, no one is looking at, oh, we have a flyover and all those things, right? And we don't know the timeline of TOD, you know? The developer could start even before the, you know, the flyover starts, you know, once we do this, go to the phase, you know, people are standing in line to basically take a dig at it. So, so, so with, with that said, like, you know, I'm just trying, and you don't have to answer now, but if you can shoot an email with that kind of, you know, data that I'm looking for is super critical, and, yes, Michelle.
Please finish.
Yeah, and, and also like, your data, right? Are you 100% sure this is all verified and everything? Because data, data is not wrong, how you interpret is also different, because I'm, my field is data analytics, you can put a data in 100 ways.
Sure.
You know, so I just want to ensure this is the best scenario that you're showing us, or what is, or what is the worst scenario?
And before you answer, just, you're bringing up the Airport Boulevard project, the McCrimmon project, so just to remind council about the timeframes for those. Airport Boulevard is set to begin at the end of this year, and that's only to Church Street, that's not the flyover, but to Church Street, that Phase 1 project is set to begin late this year. And then we're finishing up right away acquisition, or NC DOT is finishing up right away acquisition, right away acquisition for McCrimmon now. And that project is scheduled to begin next summer with about a two-year timeframe to complete.
And the airport?
So just to provide that context.
And the airport is how, like, you know, starting this year, but how much time the airport will take?
I think that's about a year and a half timeframe.
So, but would it be fair to say three years from now, both will be complete, or four years?
Based on the current schedule, yes. Now, things do tend to shift out a little bit, I will acknowledge that, but both of those projects are actively being worked on. And it's just been the right away acquisition right now that's taken a little bit more time with both of those.
I was asking, I forgot my question that I asked you.
I'm sure it was one I'd have a great answer to.
So I, I would like to see that kind of a data, if possible, put in, like, in different charts, like, as Michelle was saying, like, you know, it's still four years from now before we see the traffic elevation of this whole project, right? So those assumptions would be good, and based on this, this is what happens, based on this, this is what happens. And, and yeah, I remember my question, is about the data and data interpretation. I wanted to ask, what is the, this is the best scenario, what's the worst scenario? And I have seen in the past, people have taken the same data simulated and shown a different results too. So what would, what's your take on it?
So I'm not sure there's a, a best case, worst case, we, we took the assumptions that had come out of TOD, so, you know, 2,000-ish apartments and 260,000 square feet of commercial space in TOD West, and generally the same amount in TOD South, and then loaded those intensities into the Triangle Regional Model to make sure that the, the traffic analysis zones that were in the model were adequately addressing those volumes of traffic. And then the model churns for 10 hours while we all go home and go to bed, and we come back and it gives us projected volumes based on that. This isn't a, it, it's not one where we really can go in and, and do too much tweaking, or have a lot of incentive to.
So, so is TOD the only place that you have put? Because the Church Street corridor has a lot of empty slots, you know?
Sure.
Like you said, you use the land use plan, you know, rezoning, whatever happens, there are like at least 150, 200 acres in that area that could be developed.
So, and that's what the, the Triangle Regional Model is very good about, using the data that it has with the area land use plans to account for growth that's not specific to anything you're directly adding to the network. What it does better than traffic studies for this type of project is account for, and the reason why we used, I should have included this as well, so apologies, the reason we use something like the Triangle Regional Model and not just a TIA approach to this type of analysis, is because when you have an extension like Airport Boulevard and are trying to figure out where traffic may be diverted if people have an alternative route east-west, or if McCrimmon Parkway, when it gets widened, is an easier route to travel because there are fewer choke points along it, like you're mentioning, the regional model is very good about figuring out where that, that traffic wants to be. And so instead of us making assumptions about traffic distribution and assignment, the model is accounting for all of that, where attractions might be elsewhere in town or the county, and that's how it loads it. And so I think that's part of the way we address some of the, kind of where does the data come from type stuff.
All right, I'll let my colleagues, but thanks for this question.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Ralph.
Yes, I have a couple of questions as well. Which one do I want to start with? So I'm trying to understand, on slide 16, are, is the recommendation in the area by TOD West, is the recommendation there to be two-lane with a turn, left turn lane, or two-lane without a turn, left turn lane?
So, so the, the traffic study that would be done with TOD West would ultimately determine what specific lineage at the driveway would happen. It, it would be my guess that neither of the access points for TOD could reasonably happen without a left turn lane in the median. So I would expect TOD West and South to have a two-way left turn lane, though I do believe significant portions of Church Street in that area already have a center turn lane. I think most, most of the neighborhoods along Church Street have left turn lanes, so there's really not a lot of impact on the west side.
Okay, so this does not make a specific recommendation for what Church Street would look like?
That is exactly right, yes, ma'am. So that, this is, what is the minimum lineage that would be needed? And then the traffic study that came in and said, I mean, for TOD West, there's absolutely, for both of them, there's going to have to be a right turn lane on Church Street into the driveway. So that's not reflected in the baseline cross-section, but would absolutely be a requirement once someone submitted a traffic study and y'all got to review it.
See, this is where I have an issue with the TIA, is it's project specific.
Mm-hmm.
So if you've spent any time going down Church Street, you're going to see it is, it goes in and out, in and out.
Yes, ma'am.
Rather than taking a more holistic approach, like, you know, I'm thinking about Town Hall Drive, was a traffic study done on Town Hall Drive to determine that it would be four lanes with the median in the middle all the way down? I mean, granted, it does have developments on either side, but those came over time, and it seems like it's, and, and Councilmember Johnson probably knows more about this, you know, a consistent approach was made from the beginning, and it looks like it was planned.
Yes, ma'am.
Whereas Church Street looks like it's been done, I can't think of a good word that does, piecemeal, yeah, I was thinking half something, but, um, I don't, I kind of never found a good synonym for that. But yeah, it looks like it was half-baked, it looks, it's not planned, so you're constantly going in or out, in or out. And then if, you know, where every development is, yes, there's a left turn lane, but if it so happens that it wasn't calculated exactly right, the length of the left lane, you end up with, you know, backed up traffic.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just think, in general, a more consistent approach should be done, and that determining how Church Street looks should not be done on a project-specific basis. It should be done more holistic. What I would, like, we should be planning for the future and not per subdivision. I have a problem, I do not believe that by 2050, we would not need at least a left turn lane all the way up and down Church Street. So I don't see why we wouldn't just do it now.
So, and, and to kind of answer in two parts, town staff can jump in when I start saying the wrong thing, but there are some corridors that are constructed as part of town projects that are done comprehensively. Town Hall Drive construct as a four-lane roadway, you just widened Morrisville Carpenter comprehensively. But the, the, I think even Morrisville Carpenter was probably built out in some pieces by development that happened along the corridor, and then the town project comes in and completes the pieces. So it's a very expensive proposition, and y'all knew this, for the town to construct an entire roadway corridor to the same section, when you can get developers to fund that as their projects come in, it does look weird when you have the, the in and out, and I'll completely concede that. And we do believe, and this was a discussion we've had with town staff as we came up with a recommendation, certainly believe that they are going to be, there are already left turn lanes at most major intersections, and believe that would be reasonable to expect. So having the two-lane, without the, having the two-lane section on the top without the left turn lane, is probably going to end up being the exception rather than the rule on the corridor, and mostly for smaller developments where that volume's not needed, or you can achieve that without having to impact already-built projects. But completely agree, it's, it's, it's a weird look, and you see it all over the place.
Well, then, you know, and I understand the town is not going to undertake a, a project to totally redo Church Street. What I would suggest is, can we update the, what do y'all call it, the cross-section of Church Street to include the left turn lane? And our, you know, make the amendment to the CTP and update that cross-section? Is that an option?
And that is an option this evening, if we go back to next steps here, so should council decide that a CTP amendment is desired, staff will need to present cross-sections to the PZV and then ultimately back to the town council. And that could be, if, if that is the council's desire, then that is certainly an option.
Okay. All right, and lastly, I am interested in knowing, you know, the, one of the bullets in here talks about the Florida DOT data is nuanced.
Yes, ma'am.
But what does that mean specifically?
It, it means that they have a broader range of roadway classifications that you can evaluate volumes against. So NC DOT, basically, they've got a limited list of roadway types, local, minor thoroughfare, major thoroughfare, the same terminology you'd see on your own comprehensive plan. Florida DOT does a better job of both where that is happening, if it's a rural, if it's a suburban area, if it's a very dense urban area, and then still allows for some of those roadway factors to go in. So it's not like they're, it's not that they're gaming, it's just that they have better and more recent data, I believe, that would, that allows you to dial in to what a specific roadway may carry.
So what criteria was used for Church Street based on the FDOT? I don't know what you call it.
Data sets?
Yeah.
So we, so we used a more urban area, so when, when you're looking at, when you're looking at an area that half of the, half of the section is going to have several thousand apartments and significant commercial development, and then likely multimodal accommodations that come as a different piece, we looked at a more urban area as opposed to some of the outskirts of town that might fit more of the suburban feel. So given the type of uses and intensity that you'd be seeing around TOD, I think the thought is that would act more like somewhere transitioning into urban, we, we certainly didn't call it city center, we're not pretending it's downtown Manhattan, but it's not, you know, western end of Morrisville Carpenter either.
Right. So then what classification was used with the NC DOT that pushed the output as being over capacity in 2050?
So they have, I believe it's either minor thoroughfare or major thoroughfare, I don't think there's a lot of recognition from NC DOT for four-lane minor thoroughfares, typically once you get to four lanes, it's major thoroughfare category, but it was one of the thoroughfare classifications for NC.
So you use minor thoroughfare?
Because, because minor thoroughfare covers two-lane sections with a center turn lane.
Okay. So you're saying the FDOT data includes more minute classifications of roads?
Yes, ma'am, more refined, more minute zones that you could kind of, more, more buckets to pick from.
Okay, that makes sense. That's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Ralph, followed by Councilmember Skarven Johnson, please.
Yeah, I mean, I think most of my questions have been, have been asked, I mean, I just feel like it's still so hard for me to... to get my arms around how this could not be four-lane with all the, I understand the logic and the reasoning of the data, but I think it's important for us to understand, even for the public streaming this or watching this online, that, you know, we're, we're being put in a situation where we've approved development, we've got more projects in the pipeline. And, you know, I just don't know what guidance staff is seeking. I mean, we're going to go with your recommendation, but, I mean, I really liked the Mayor Portem's part about kind of seeing whether we could have some benchmarks before 2050 so that we would be able to compare, you know, what is in the pipeline now. I don't know, you know, like, in terms of, part of the problem with a lot of the traffic that I've noticed is just the coordination of the traffic signals.
Sure.
And whether, and that's, that's on DOT in terms of what are they doing? And I think for all of us, for me specifically, you know, I'm so cautious right now of any projections with DOT. To the point where I believe, like, nothing that they have is going to get done. And we're going to have a new governor a year from now. And I think whoever that governor is along the legislature is going to have to really reevaluate, kind of like, not how we're funding DOT, but how we're going to get out of this crisis that we're in. So, I'm just venting, but I don't know whether there's any, you know, like, I mean, you know, are they using AI systems to better have coordination of traffic signals? Or, I don't know. I don't, I don't know what Jim Weaver at DIT is thinking. He's been talking about AI, but you would think that, and he's an AI specialist, you're a data scientist. I mean, wouldn't there be a way of using those kinds of technologies to get a better prediction? I mean, when we get this data, what format is the data in?
That's what they are using DRM for.
Okay.
I can, actually, I'll speak to that, Councilmember Ralph. The, one of the things that this region is looking at right now is intelligent transportation systems, which is being coordinated with Campo and DCH CNPO, working on regional vision. I think there are documents in place. I know an RFQ listing out to look at a regional vision, because right now, the different towns are pretty siloed with some of the smart lights, things like that. So, that is a project that this area is working on. I know that Chris Lucassino from Campo calls it the low-hanging fruit. So, it definitely would ameliorate a lot of some of the issues that we currently see with the traffic lights. So, that is in the works. Is it going to be done immediately? No, but it is something that's on the horizon.
So, what guidance are you seeking tonight then from us in terms of, because I'm still having a hard time getting around?
Well, the guidance, I guess, so town council indicated that we first wanted a conclusion for the Church Street study to move forward with the TOD vision zoning plan. So, the guidance tonight is if, well, staff recommends that the improvements be guided by TIA's and not new CTP cross-sections. But of course, it's up to town council if you want to, if you agree with that staff recommendation or if you did want us to amend CTP cross-section.
And the final, if we don't vote on, well, my question to staff, final question for me, if we don't go with the staff recommendation, does that delay the TOD, that does delay the TOD?
Yes. Somebody say yes, because I think that's right. I see a lot of head nods.
The process would require, again, doing study for the cross-section, coming before the PZB, getting approval, and then coming before the town council to get approval of the cross-section.
Councilmember Skarren Johnson, please.
Thank you. A lot of questions have been asked that are very good, insightful thinking. I know that I've traveled on this quarter during peak times, in the mornings and in the evenings, and it is not always pleasant. And Morrisville Carpenter Road for many years was not very pleasant. And now it's expanded to four lanes. So, it still is waiting the expansion of Aviation Parkway to four lanes, but it's a little better than it used to be. And consequently, Morrisville Carpenter Road was always scored low in the Campo algorithm because it was a local-only road. And we were never able to get funding unless we invested heavily, which we did, from a town standpoint in order to get that expanded. So, when I look at this road, Church Street has always been identified by NC DOT as a two-lane-only road. They've planned for it, they've never even entertained expanding it to four lanes. And consequently, when the developments make their driveways, they're only making it with the width of a two-lane road with a driveway. And we do have the bump outs, like Councilmember Fender said. With that said, we have inherent town activities besides the flyover, besides the intense development, and that is events.
Yes ma'am.
We are adjacent to the Church Street Park, and we have big dreams of having some serious events in that area. And with a two-lane road and one point of access that is, I think there might be a secondary, but it's not really a access point, we're going to have heavy congestion. And for that reason, I think we need to consider, at least at the front of that, stacking expansion. Maybe not the whole street. But I'm concerned, due to our own town planning, that we're, if we don't consider events in the future, that we need to accelerate some of that development earlier than is on schedule. So, I would like the public to better appreciate, understand, and give some feedback to this study so that we can kind of level-set where we should go. Because I think events are something that's very important to the town, and I'm not sure where that lands here. That's all I have, thank you.
Can you address, speaking to events, was that part of this?
So, we certainly acknowledge that Church Street's happening. Models are based on typical weekday traffic while schools are in session. But even the Church Street improvements project itself accounted. So, there was a separate TIA that was performed for Church Street. They identified improvements. Those improvements have been constructed, and I believe that was the turn lanes along Church Street. I think one of the things that would inevitably happen, certainly special events or event traffic are completely beasts of their own. A lot of times when you see those happen generally, but not always, they don't happen between seven and nine in the morning when everybody's going to work or dropping a kid off. And they don't always happen when, in the afternoon between four and six. Now, certainly, we see at parks all across town in the state where, you know, my kid plays soccer at 5:30, so I've got to hustle out there when I get home from work. So, I'm not, I'm not saying there's no traffic there. But when we're building for the typical conditions, when we're looking at what the corridor should look like from a typical condition, that's where we're looking at the model. And then specific TIA's come in and say, oh, completely agree. There probably should be a southbound right turn lane from Church Street onto McCrimmon Parkway, and that was installed. You know, there should be longer left and right turn lanes on McCrimmon Parkway if TOD West or South were to happen. And the TIA's are very good at identifying what those improvements are. The basis of a corridor study is the weekday. So, it's not that we don't understand that the park project's coming in or appreciate the impacts that it might have. But traffic studies for those projects are typically the best mechanism for identifying what improvements need to happen. And all of this to say, if the DOT project completely collapsed and the McCrimmon Parkway overpass never happened, and somebody came in and submitted a traffic study for TOD West or TOD South and could not assume those improvements were in place, then that developer would probably be on the hook for significantly more improvements at their own expense because the DOT improvements wouldn't be in place. So, I don't think there's a situation where TOD West or South necessarily get to come in, propose all these units and impacts, and then say, well, DOT is eventually going to do something, we're off the hook. We have seen projects on the private development side that I've worked on where, even where there are DOT improvements in place, if those aren't going, if those improvements aren't going to be in place when a project happens, the project can't assume they're in place. It's in your own TIA policy where we can't assume unfunded improvements. So, I think that's kind of the catch, the safety mechanism for those type of impacts. But I completely appreciate the idea that we've got a heavy use very close to McCrimmon Parkway, and we, it's very easy to see the impacts from those events right at the intersection, so.
Did I address your issues, Councilmember Skarren Johnson? You still had the floor, I was just recognizing. Councilmember Johnson, did you have anything before we go into a second round?
Oh, yes, I do. I'm all over the place, I got to get my, my.
Then Councilmember Johnson, then myself, and then we'll do a second round, because it looks like some other people want to weigh in. Hopefully, during the second round, we can talk towards these next steps as a group and build toward consensus. But you have the floor, Councilmember Johnson.
So, I want to hit on so much. I have three pieces of paper here with notes on it. So, I'll start with, because Councilmember Fender asked this about Town Hall Drive and the history behind that. And yes, I was on council when we did that. That was easy to do in a comprehensive way because there were so few property owners. And there was, I would tell you, that was probably the very first public-private partnership the town has ever done. And it was between the town and really two other developers to do that in a really thoughtful, comprehensive manner. Also, knowing that the widening of Church Street would be incredibly problematic. And that's why we made sure Jeremiah came over to Church Street, that Traybrook was already there, could connect to Town Hall Drive. So, that was done in a very comprehensive way. That is unfortunately kind of rare, because it's really hard. When you look at Church Street now, there are multiple owners, and a lot of them are single-family homeowners too. So, it makes it very difficult to go in and in a comprehensive manner, take property from individual homeowners to widen a road for future, some future needs. So, there's, there's that balance of just how much you do and don't do. So, anyhow, I just wanted to kind of, and I could go on about that project too, but that, just to answer that a little bit. You said something really, really important just now too about how development can be tied to road projects.
Yes ma'am.
And I think this is why you don't see a whole lot of development in this, in this area, because they know how expensive it will be to widen McCrimmon and do the massive improvements at the intersection of Church and McCrimmon. And that's why they're waiting. I would tell you, I think they're waiting for the DOT project. And I know that because I've seen that happen in years past. They'll, they'll wait, and that's why McCrimmon. When we looked at the McCrimmon extension, four years, there was conversations out there, and no one would develop that land because it was way too expensive to extend McCrimmon. And it was only until the town understood the, not only the economic development importance of the McCrimmon extension, but the transportation importance to our residents that we partnered with DOT to make that McCrimmon extension happen. And now you see Spark come in and all, the Wake Competition Center and all that development. So, anyhow, so I think there is a way, because I've seen it and I know it, and you've talked about it, there is a way to make sure that development is tied to road projects and to road improvements. We have it already in our, in our UDO. We have it already when it comes to a TIA. So, I'm comfortable there. I just wonder, and I think this is really important, and I think, well, let me talk about the McCrimmon project. The right-of-way is finished, Michelle, you just said that. And I can see that, by the way. I can see where there are already some businesses that have moved out. We can see where the flyover is going to come now when you, when you drive in that area. But, and I am not confident a lot of times in DOT, but how confident are we that that right-of-way is finished and this project is going to? You talked about construction. We will actually see construction next summer. I want to verify that, as best you know.
So, I do want to clarify, right-of-way is not finished, but it is this close. They're estimating that in May it will be done. There've just been a couple properties that have taken some additional time that they are still finalizing. But right-of-way is very close. Right now, they're estimating construction to begin in July of 2025. Now, to be honest, every time we get an update, it's pushed back one, two months. Would I be surprised if it ends up being fall? No. But it is moving, and I am fairly confident that this project is going to happen. The plans have been developed. The right-of-way is pretty much acquired at this point. So, I think we have a fair amount of confidence that it's moving forward.
Okay, thank you for that. And I would, I would, there has been so much invested already in that project from a financial standpoint, a time standpoint. Buying up right-of-way has not been easy, and it is not cheap. So, from that aspect, I'm confident too that the project will happen. Let me clarify, I too am just worried about that all these dates slip all the time. But, but if somebody wants to come in and develop in the area before DOT is ready, they will have to do the road improvements. So, I think, so again, I'm back to that other comment I made. I'm confident, or I'm more confident in that chicken and the egg as it appears right here. Sorry, I made, I made a lot of notes, and I want to, so, so the McCrimmon project is a road widening project and a flyover. And honestly, I think is going to be a game changer. And I would use that words when we are talking to everybody. It will be a game changer in that area. And you were really clear about saying, and we all know this, that the backup on Church Street is because of the intersection. And the intersection is going to be a game changer for allowing traffic to flow more smoothly. And then, of course, the flyer will be a game changer. I think in this presentation, aside from some of the other information that's been asked for, I would include that in this presentation and in this document as it, as it's available to the public. I think, I think we all that deal with this, and of course, you all that deal with it day in and day out. You know, and it's like second nature to you. But when, when, and I will say, when we or a resident reads something, we're reading what's in front of us, and we don't understand or remember or have never heard the history and what's coming and what's approved, and all we see is we look at, you're not going to widen this street? I sit here all the time, it is horrendous. What is wrong with you? Now, of course, we all know there's, there's a lot happening here, but I think you need to incorporate that in everything you do here so that when the public reads and sees this presentation, they know this is just one little tiny piece of the puzzle that we're all working on, and that we're working on it to help the traffic flow in this area. So, I don't know how you all do that, but you need to do that. I'm going to remind you every time we talk about anything related to transportation from here on out with that. And I understand Mayor Portem Garamella's concern. His concern is that are we doing what's right now for the future in this area? Because we are committed, I think, to a DOT project. And it's, we're, we're having these conversations and delaying the DOT or the TOD project because we want to make sure we're doing the right thing for the future. And, and that is important. So, I hear that we've delayed this a little bit, but we delayed it to make sure that we're asking all the right questions and doing all the right things. So, I appreciate that a lot. And then the last thing I wanted, because this came up too. I think during budget conversations, we talked about the transportation plan and making sure that we funded that sooner than later. So, I think that's important, obviously, to us, that we do something with the updating of the transportation plan. I went, while we were all kind of talking here, I went and to Google Maps. I, I, I went, while we were all kind of talking here, I, I went and to Google Maps and looked at Church Street and the, the idea that there should be some kind of a comprehensive plan update to, and I'm, I'm, I don't want to, I'm not trying to put words in Councilmember Fender's mouth because I don't, I, I need to ask her to clarify. But I, I, I think it's problematic to put some kind of a transportation plan update amendment that says all of Church Street, and again, I'm not sure that this, this is what she said, but all of Church Street should have a centered turn lane. I think that is problematic. I think before I would be comfortable making that kind of a statement and a commitment that I would need to understand what that means all up and down Church Street. Again, we still have a lot of single-family homes on Church Street that would be greatly affected by any kind of a commitment to doing that without really understanding what that means. And there are a lot of areas already up and down Church Street that do have the turn lane because of the development that's out there. And that's appropriate, obviously, and it may not really be appropriate all over the place just yet. So I'm a little apprehensive about, about that right now without understanding, understanding more. And thank you for sharing the current volumes up and down Church Street. That was very helpful from me as well. And, and then as far, I'll go to recommendations because I'm ready for that. I, I think that I agree with staff's recommendations. I agree with bringing back the TOD subarea plan so we can kind of move that along now. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could just address a couple of points, Councilmember Johnson. You're correct, there are existing pinch points already on Church Street where any widening would be difficult, but specifically moving towards Kits Creek, that 540 overpass. And also I will say that we also internally did use the word game changer for McCrimmon overpass. So that's duly noted that we, that should, I think that I agree with your assessment that should be included in this.
Keep using it.
Yeah.
Thank you. And I, thank you for the presentation. Great. One more thing and then I will be done. I really appreciate the presentation where you took us through history. I think that's important for us. It's important for me to remember kind of how we got here. Again, you live and breathe this all week long. And so for, for those reminders for us, how we got here, I think is really, really important. So I appreciate that.
And all of that without a video that, that Mr. Brown needed.
So you guys don't have a video team, Kim Lee-Horn?
Not for these, no, sir.
Okay. Fair enough. I will start where Councilmember Johnson ended. I, yes, to staff's recommendation and yes, to bring back the TOD for town council approval. I think that's important to keep that moving forward. What really struck me from the presentation, which was great and comprehensive, was that the intersections are the key. Essentially that, that one that's going to be improved as part of McCrimmon and then the flyover taking away the spillover. So it comes down to me like if we make four, Church Street, four lanes, we're speeding to a choke point. We can get there faster and we're not getting through it any faster until those two intersections are fixed. So that's, that's the game changer for me is why would I widen the road to get, to stop faster? So that's where I am on that. In regards to CTP amendments for the turn lanes, whenever there's development, the turn lane will happen as part of the development. I don't think we need to codify anything because even if we codify it, it's not going to happen until there's development. So it's already going to happen without making any changes right now. So that's kind of where I land on what I think is the two key points is that widening Church Street doesn't help. And I'd love to be able to tell the residents that we can fix this now, but it's not going to be fixed until those inter, two intersections are dealt with. And if DOT is not able to do it, TOD West will. So the sooner we get TOD West in the vision that we want, the better off we all will be and our residents. And those are my thoughts. If anyone wants to chime in a second time, especially with staff recommendations, what you feel are the best next steps for the town, now is the time to do that. I'll first recognize Councilmember Fender.
So I first had a question about something you said earlier about, was, did you say there was a traffic study done for Church Street Park?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so how old would that, that would be before Church Street Park was built?
So that study was dated January of 2023 and it was done for the upgrades to add the, the 3,000 spectators, the, so the increased seating. So presumably after the park was open and already hosting events, but prior to any expansions that were going to happen. So I think the new parking lot south of the facility has been added since that time and other things. So that study was done for an expanded cricket park.
Okay. But it, it did not, because currently there's no left turn lane going for both of the entrances into the south parking lot.
I believe one has been constructed at the northern of the southern ones, which I'm sure is, is plenty helpful.
I don't think so. I mean, I'm looking at Google Maps, the satellite, and it's pretty up to date because it's even got the stormwater and looks like asphalt going in for the.
So I'll say at one point, there were plans for a left turn lane, whether or not that's been implemented or not.
Yeah, it doesn't look like, I'm, plus I just drove down through here last, tonight to get here. And there's a left turn lane to get into the main entrance of the park, but there's not going into the south lot, which based on the experience we had last summer, created a huge bottleneck for the event because we, the event was using the south parking lot for like people getting dropped off and picked up by Uber and then for the shuttle.
Yes, ma'am.
That ran. And I'm, I'm grateful for Councilmember Skorgans-Johnson bringing up for events because it reminded me of Edward Mills Road going into the PNC Arena. This is not built for Monday through Friday traffic, you know, with schools. It's built for events specifically. And I think that's what we need to do here in this location is build it for events or else the events are going to start going elsewhere. Because we, Councilmember, Mayor Protim Garamella is with me on this. That, that weekend, we had the Major League Cricket. It was, the traffic through that area was horrendous. It was frustrating for people coming to the event. It was frustrating for those of us that live along that road. Josh would be included in that. So I think, I, I don't quite understand, to me, that traffic study that was done in 2023 had to have been inaccurate because you gotta have turn lanes into that south lot. So what'd you do, Mark? Where'd you, would, yeah.
So I'm hoping I can, I can help the conversation hopefully. So we did actually have the TIA done for the Church Street Park. We did that so we would know what kind of volume and things would happen during the events. The, the TIA did call out for a left turn lane to be added to the new parking lot on the south, on the south lot. We are working with DOT now to do it potentially as a, as a, because there is enough asphalt width there to add the turn lane in, to stripe it in. We're working on that permitting now. In the interim, we're looking at when the next special event happens to actually have it coned off so that people can make a left turn via like a special events coned area so the police can manage that. And then long-term, we're looking at a potential to add it as a betterment to the McCrimmon Parkway property. Since they're going to be doing some work on Church Street and maybe having that striped off at that time. So we're working through those details now. The TIA did, did confirm that it would make sense to have the turn lane for the special events, but it wasn't required on the normal day-to-day operations.
Yeah, and that makes sense. I guess my, I will still assert that we, regardless of what the traffic looks like Monday through Friday during peak times, we should still be adding a, a turn lane or whatever is needed planned for the event. Similar, I mean, it's a, it's a opposite end of the spectrum, but exactly what Edward's Mill Road does for the PNC Arena and all around that area is specifically designed for when they have events. And I think that's what is needed here. I mean, and we can't, we can't wait until after McCrimmon Parkway is widened because that's not, if they don't start till fall of 2025, I mean, that's a long ways out. So that's all I have.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate, we are working on some interim measures. We know there's enough asphalt width out there now to stripe it that way. So as soon as we get that verified and work through those details, we're trying to get it done in conjunction with the completion of the south lot. So we're, we're working on that.
But are you going to have a left lane for both of the entrances into the south lot?
There's only one that can be accommodated, the, the northern entrance. The southern entrance is too close to the intersection of McCrimmon.
Okay.
And actually, we're still working on those driveway details. That, that driveway will most likely be a right-in, right-out, the southern driveway because it's too close to the intersection. So the only one you could essentially make a left would be from the northern one anyway.
That makes sense.
And that was Mark Spanioli, our town engineer. Thank you very much. A little cameo appearance. Councilmember Robody, please.
Yeah, I remember talking about this when we talked about, about bringing Major League Cricket to the town. I remember talking about the fact that we were going to be, there's not enough parking for spectators. There's no parking for spectators. And we talked about bringing thousands of people down Church Street. And I, I remember that conversation. I, I, to be honest with you, I thought that there was going to be some type of turning mechanism for, for the buses that were going to be bringing the people in. I, I'm not exactly sure where that went off the rails, but I, I did think that was going to be the case and that's still very badly needed because we can't, I, I really don't want to have another summer like last summer. That, the traffic was, was horrendous. And, and I was on one of the buses, like I wasn't even driving. I can't imagine what it was like to live down there and just be trying to get down the street to Harris Teeter. Like that's terrible. So definitely yes and to everything that Councilmember Fender and Skorgans-Johnson just said. But the, oh, so Mayor, did I understand you correctly to say that if the TOD, if the DOT, Department of Transportation, does not come through with or does not begin the McCrimmon flyover, that, that developers that want to develop in that TOD would be responsible for a flyover? Or were you talking about, you were talking about them making intersection improvements, but not a flyover?
Correct. Just the McCrimmon and Church Street intersection would be affected by their development. So that one would be on their hook. Kind of just paraphrasing what he was saying.
Okay. All right. I just want to clarify that just so, I, I got that a little bit twisted. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear what was actually, you know, that if it's on DOT and if we don't have DOT, we don't have a flyover.
That, that, that would be my guess. Yeah, I don't think any, I don't think there's any other mechanism that could fund something to the scale of a flyover. But to the mayor's point, I think a project would identify improvements that are proportional to their impacts and would make those which likely would not be a flyover, but would be, I would expect improvements at the McCrimmon and Church intersection.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
So staff got affirmation from Councilmember Johnson and myself. Where do we stand? What have you heard? What do you need from us? Do you need me to have everyone go down the line?
I think, thank you, Mayor. I do believe that if we could, well, yeah, go down the line.
Town manager?
Yes, thank you. And Josh is correct. I think, you know, what we're looking for is consensus that you would like, you have this information, you accept the information that's provided and that you are ready to have staff bring back the TOD vision. Our, our tentative plan would be to bring that back May 28th. And if you're not opposed, you have all seen that, you're familiar with it, we would initially propose just a sort of brief inaction in the same night, do a refresher on what that TOD vision is and take action that night unless you prefer to do it in two nights. But that would start tonight with a consensus to do that. And then there would be a vote either May 28th or if you want to split it, we could bring it back June 11th.
Okay. Councilmember Al, please.
I had one question about a process. So if we, if we, if we agreed to go with the TOD subarea plan, and, and my, my, my only drawback of holding back on it, I really don't want to move it forward because I'm still really concerned and do not feel comfortable at all with the amount of development we still see. I just can't get my arms around the data that I saw and the traffic I see at the intersections. But I feel like holding it up is going to delay all the work we put into this plan. And there's a lot of, there's other developers that want to come in and build out the rest of McCrimmon. So if there were developers that, if we move forward and we give you the guidance to come back with a subarea plan, can we still work with developers? Councilmember Johnson made one point really well that, you know, when we did the Town Hall Drive, that was a really good public-private partnership. But maybe there's a developer out there that's looking to build something big that can actually come and say, look, can you help us do this more? I mean, would they be, I mean, or would, would they just go through the, the complete process of figuring, okay, you know, pay a payment of lieu and all that? Because that's not going to be enough to get us.
So I think, I mean, a TIA would be needed. I'm not sure quite if the question is, are you saying for expanding? Are we talking about Church Street itself and doing additional expansion? Is that what you're implying?
Yeah, I mean, just tell me in the development community that we really need, you know, we, we, you know, it's important that we invest in our infrastructure and just to make sure that we, I don't know how we do it. Typically, they're just going to go through the process. But what I'm afraid of is that we, we go this, this parcel, you know, subarea plan and then we see growth continuing. And then a developer comes in and goes through the process and we say, well, you know, it's this amount of traffic, we're going to do a TIA and, you know, you're going to pay us this part payment of lieu. And it's not going to be enough to cover the extra road that we need for whether it's coming into Church Street and those kinds of things. So I guess, you know, I just feel like if, if developers are listening tonight, we need their help in terms of, you know, getting more aggressive with investing as well because, you know, if we, we approve the developments and we don't have the infrastructure to support, then it's, we're all going to be frustrated. So.
So, okay. So don't forget, development in that situation, the development would do the road improvements. So I, I'm not sure what point you're making, but.
Yeah. But I mean.
So the TIA would.
They'd put, pay for lanes and stuff like that. But a lot of it is dependent on the process they have to go through, the TIA. They require TIA each time. We can't go to them and say, you know, you're going to come here and put in a million or half a million. That's all based on the TIA that they do. They come in with that. That's what I'm saying.
It would be required to do a TIA.
Yeah, that's part of the UDO.
And sometimes when you require TIA, you don't get as much of the road improvements as you want. Sometimes you do. In the past, when we've, in the past, when we've negotiated conditions with developers, whether it was Stotlemeyer property where we got over or the Slater Road Apartments, we got almost a million dollars worth of construction, traffic improvements, which is one of the reasons why I voted for it. So that's what I'm saying is that.
That was based on the TIA that was conducted.
Well, they went above and beyond the TIA.
Above and beyond the TIA. The Slater Road was a million, $800,000.
But that's a rezoning. This is not a rezoning.
Yeah, they can already build a lot of things by right.
I just, I would be, I, I, I would support the subarea plan, but I'm not happy about that.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Garamella?
Yeah. I think.
I think it's very good discussion. I really liked it. Again, I go back to what I started with, saying data never lies, data is always correct, and I wanted to feel comfortable enough to stand and say, this is based on these data points that we are making the decision. And said that I would give an, I would really like that slide that I asked for, like, you know, 2025, 2035, 2045 slide, to just show, acknowledge, because saying it's not needed is understandable, but the current scenario, if you're, it's basically sprinkling, you know, more salt on someone's wound.
But in, so, so just to clarify, in the case where, if we already, if we assume that 2050 volumes along Church Street are going to be higher than 2035 and 2025 volumes, right? Is it...
No, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to say is, 2025, is this is what it is, no McCrimmon, no airport.
Sure.
2035, assuming McCrimmon is done, airport is done, the traffic and how does the flow, you know, basically is, because you're talking about all those intersection improvements that will clear up most other things, but that's where the education is, is not just give a 2050 number, but to show the phases of how it will get improved is what people need to know.
I don't disagree, though. I think the, the corridor study, just looking at volumes along Church Street, is a different mech, like, we're evaluating something different. So we weren't evaluating iterative conditions at the church and McCrimmon Parkway, and I can appreciate that that's what you're asking for.
Yeah, but because the assumptions you made on that slide is with those considerations, right?
Sure.
That's why it is, I'm asking the same thing, how are you building towards it?
But I think when we're, so, I understand. I think, though, when we're looking at the volumes that we're ultimately comparing to DOT or Florida DOT data, the volumes that we're comparing are the volumes along Church Street that are likely less impacted by the McCrimmon Parkway stuff. Certainly, there may be people who are more attractive to the network, but the volume on Church Street will likely never, like, if, if we, you know, if we interpolate backwards, if we factor down 2050 volumes to 2025 volumes, all of those volumes are gonna come down, and the volume-to-capacity ratio will be better, and so that's what, I completely agree that a no-build and a build, I think DOT may have a no-build analysis of the McCrimmon Parkway intersection in their TIP project. I think that may be a, a situation.
Yeah, if you can, you're expert in these, so if you can ask them, I'm sure they might have done the, there is no dispute now with this data that you're showing that Church Street does not require four lane, I get that. The question is, people don't check Church Street requires or not when they're getting clogged at the intersection. And, and the intersection improvement will come based on your assumptions of McCrimmon flyover.
Sure.
That'll flow, you know, so how can we be communicative enough for them to understand for a layman saying this is what it is? That, that is where I'm asking your help. Whatever data you want to get, it is okay, but, but phase-wise, this is how things will clear up, and it is okay for continuing with the subarea TOD.
I'll defer to y'all on the timing of that, it sounds like it would be helpful.
So, yeah, I think this will be additional scope and, yeah, I, I believe that, so this is, this additional analysis will have to establish an additional scope and...
But why is it additional scope? Because the data is already there.
I believe because they would still need to rerun the figures in the Triangle Regional Model, and so...
So I can't say...
Yeah, I have a hard time if that came in.
And that's fine, the, the scope of the study was to evaluate the corridor and not iterative intersection analysis at the McCrimmon Church, so that's why we presented what we presented. However, we have done existing conditions analysis, and we have done 2050 analysis. So there is that data, there is some of that data available, but the, there was never an ask to look at an iterative year, and so there would be work to get back to an interim step. That wasn't the goal of looking 25 years in advance at what the corridor could, could look at. So certainly the goal of corridor study is to make sure it works in 25 years and not just 10, and I know y'all appreciate that, but that's why we picked the 2050 year that's consistent with the year that the Triangle Regional Model has developed traffic to, and so we were matching that and picking a horizon year that would be sufficient to give some assurance that we wouldn't expect it to be blowing up capacity 10 minutes after the study was sealed, so.
Okay, if you had to go talk to a resident, how would you explain this?
I would say, I would say you can reach Town Council at their respective, no, so it, it's a fair question. What I would say is that the goal of the Comprehensive Transportation Plan is to identify macro-level recommendations for corridors across town. There are cases where individual intersections are studied, this was one that we studied this intersection in the 2050 study year. But then individual traffic studies done is either private developments, like we talk about when we see TIA's, or when NC DOT or the town come and do a comprehensive improvement project, those analyses evaluate intersection at an individual level. So what we can say is the 2050 Comprehensive Transportation Plan goals are a vision of what the town looks like in the future, and then individual projects as they come along help us build out to that goal and vision while we get there. And so CTP establishes the big stuff, and the traffic studies and other studies come in and give us the details. And your council can be reached at their respective emails.
I don't wanna pressure, but it's okay, it's a conversation for later. But it's, I'll go with the subarea, but it is disappointing that the scope was not that. I'll be very honest with that, because we don't get into the details of what, we just tell staff to do what has to be done, but it is hard to sell to a person who is getting clogged saying by 2050, you know, this, you know, is not what it is. The 2050 data shows it's, it's, two lanes are not needed, but at the same time, intersection improvement will help.
And, and I think that's the, I think that's the focus, is we're, we're not asking them to buy that the road looks the same in 2050 as it does today, is that millions and millions get spent to do that. And I'm not trying to make light of the diff, so please don't take any of this as disrespect that I'm making light of the conversations you do have to have, but I think there is enough in the works to, y'all's credit, NC DOT's credit, getting projects in the pipeline. And so that would be, that would be my approach.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Potem. Councilmember Robotti, please.
Yeah, I'm very mindful that we're 50 minutes over time, so I just wanna say this really quickly. I do think that the public can understand how you explained it to me, which is that, because they see it every day, they sit in it every day, the gridlock at those, that intersection. And I think that, that explaining to people that the combination of the, of the improvements in the two intersections is more relevant to clearing up that gridlock and that backlog than anything, honestly, that we could do to Church Street. I do think that, that the public can understand that, and I think that I can message that, you know, now that you've explained it to me, I think I can explain it back out. I, so, yeah, I, I think Councilmember Rouse's point, though, was well-taken. I, I think that his point might have been that we, if we put into a, a transportation plan that the road should be two, should be two lanes all the way down, that we may lose some leverage in specific projects if we, you know, if we look at a specific project and say, ooh, right there, it really should be, you know, two lanes and two turning lanes or, or whatever, you know? So I think that, I think that was more, that he was more talking about projects that might come up that might deviate from that, and those would be covered, I just wanna make sure, those would be covered by individual traffic studies, and that there, there's no, we don't lose any type of leverage to demand that those, that whatever improvements to the road beyond what's in the traffic plan would be, would be made at the time of project completion, right?
Yes. So that, yeah, the TIA's will dictate the improvements for, I mean, specifically TOD West, TOD South, for example, and those, so then the developer will need to implement those recommendations.
Okay, and a TIA might come back and say that in this specific section, we need four lanes, or we need two turning lanes, or, and that would be the new standard, we wouldn't, there's no room for a developer to say, it says two lanes right in your plan, that's what I'm doing, right? I, I haven't been through as many of these as, like, Liz, so I just wanna make sure that I understand what you're saying.
I'll let, I'll let Transportation Planner Caleb Alred.
Okay.
Thank you. Caleb Alred, Transportation Planner Two for the town. So as your TIA, you know, the person who perfor, or who manages your TIA reviews, I can say that you're correct. So the standard would be the two-lane cross-section. So that's the first step of our, of our review of their proposal, is saying, do we need to widen the road for the Comprehensive Transportation Plan's ultimate cross-section? The second step would say, okay, if they need a TIA on top of those road improvements, what additional work do they need to do to mitigate their traffic impact? And so for the TOD, that would, you know, as it's been conveyed throughout the, the presentation, it is, it is assumed that TIA would be necessary based on the scope and the scale of the project, and that, that, that is when we would get on, into the details of above and beyond what is required per the CTP.
Okay. All right, that's what I thought, I just wanted to, I just wanna make sure I thoroughly understood that. Okay, thank you very much, Caleb.
This point, does staff have what they need to move forward?
So I don't know that we've heard from everyone, I think what I've heard is two people that expressed interest in moving to bring the TOD back. So what I would say, perhaps to your concern, Mayor Potem Garamella, is staff can certainly help you with crafting a message for the community that can explain why this is currently shown as a two-lane path throughout the majority of Church Street. We can help them understand what a TIA means when the time comes, DOT's role in this. I think if, if that would make you more comfortable, then that hopefully would allow, we can work on that, perhaps, if you're then willing to allow TOD to come back, to keep that process moving, and we'll make sure to commit to a statement and some outreach that will help the neighborhoods, the HOAs, others to understand what this is and why you're moving forward.
Yeah, I think I've made it clear, I'm okay with going into subarea plan.
Okay.
Option one, it's the only thing I was asking for more information, which is apparently out of scope, it seems.
So we have enough consensus? I heard four. Councilmember Johnson, myself, Councilmember Al, and Councilmember Garamella. Didn't quite get confirmation that you were okay moving to the subarea plan, Councilmember Robotti?
I, I think, yeah, everyone needs to weigh, have that opportunity.
Well, everyone's had it, but no one else has their things up, so I was just trying to move us along.
But not everyone has weighed in.
Councilmember Robotti, did you wanna weigh in on staff recommendations?
I am comfortable with staff recommendations.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson? She already said yes earlier.
I already said I'm comfortable with staff recommendation.
As did I.
Mayor, when you say you're gonna take a pull of the council, we shouldn't have to raise our, our things. You are literally going down the line. So as a matter of procedure, we were, I was not...
Sure.
Requesting to speak because I anticipated you were going down the line. So in the future, when you say things like that, that is going to be my behavior, is not raising my thing. So, and I know Councilmember Fender is also patiently waiting to add her input. I struggle with this, because I, I see the traffic today, and I know there is great fear and concern in our community about adding more stress in the, in the near future to that section of Church Street. The fact that NC DOT has been delaying the McCrimmon flyover, has been delaying the McCrimmon extension, which are resolutions to some of that impact, does not give me comfort that as we look to increasing the density along Church Street, that we will have that sequencing correct. I, I'm, I've seen aviation get delayed. Morseville-Carbondale Road is finally done after 20 years that I have been requested yet, and aviation was supposed to be enhanced, and it's not. So forgive me for being a little bit skeptical on the sequencing and all that kinda stuff. Staff's recommendation for doing a TIA as a project comes along is a valid recommendation, and I, I appreciate that, and I will support it, but I will be very vocal every time we get a delay on McCrimmon flyover, on McCrimmon this, because I, I am very doubtful that we're gonna have things coming on time, and if we have to slow it down and look at the Transportation Plan at some point, I will be the first to raise my hand. So, thank you.
And I'll be right there. I'll be right there with you. I do not, I'm not in favor of moving forward. I think there's more work that needs to be done to look at Church Street holistically and come up with a better plan around Church Street, Park, and events, when the events occur. I don't think, I mean, basically, we're saying we're not gonna do anything. We're gonna wait until, and do a traffic impact analysis for the TOD, but we're okay just accepting a two-lane road all along Church Street now, and we are, we have issues today along Church Street, so I don't know what the solution is, but I'm not comfortable with the recommendations.
I understand both of your misgivings around this and with the NC DOT delays, absolutely. And Councilmember Fender, I'll, I'll just reiterate, you know, this, this study looked at, was for, does the data support four lanes? NC DOT and FDOT data did not support four lanes for it. I think that there's certainly more studies, I mean, with the CTP, there'll be more public engagement, more encompassing studies, but for this limited study, the data did support that two lanes do maintain at a level of service D, so we're, so staff is just going by the data.
I could thank Josh for that, because I think that was very well said. And then I wanna circle back just briefly to something, something that Councilmember Johnson said earlier that I think is really important. If the recommendation is four lanes, the study said two lanes or two lanes with a center turn lane, which staff agreed with, there is enough right-of-way to do either of those options. If you're looking at four lanes, you need right-of-way dedication, and, you know, the point was made about looking at those surrounding property owner impacts, an analysis of that would need to be done, but just by looking at an aerial, you could tell you are going to impact neighborhood buffers, if not people's yards, you're also taking land away from the cricket field. So that is something that we would need to look at very closely.
So I believe you have what you need at this time?
Michelle, you're good. We're good, sir.
Okay.
So if I could, we will bring back the TOD on May 28th. Just wanna confirm, are you all thumbs up to hearing a, a quick overview and then being asked to take action that night, or would you prefer it be brief and then action after?
I'd be fine that evening, Councilmember Johnson?
I would prefer a brief and then an action.
Okay.
I, I think, I think it's important, because there's some, probably gonna be some long discussion about the plan itself again, so I would, I'd prefer two meetings.
Okay, thank you. That's all we need, sir.
It is a little late for a break, so let's go ahead and take 15 minutes, please, please Town Manager? Ready to go? Thank you. That was a well-needed break. We're now at Item 10, Public Address. Interim Town Clerk Parker Evans will now present any public comments received.
We did receive one email from Lou Ureini on Mr. Grove Circle in Mooresville, and he had three issues that he wanted to note. He was disappointed about the space force not being incorporated into the Veterans Memorial. He's concerned about saving large Hartwoods as part of the town center design, and concerned about the cost associated with plans for the Church Street disc golf course.
Okay. Nothing else via email?
No emails.
Okay, has anyone signed up for any in-person comments?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak for up to three minutes to this body on any subject of your choosing? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much. We're at Item 11, Action Items. We have two action items, Proposed Master Sign Plan for the Southport Campus and Revision to Rule 25 Council Policy. We invite May Golden to come forward to facilitate the first item. Ms. Golden.
Good evening. Ta-da. Good evening, Council, Mayor Colley. So previously, you've been briefed about the public item, and here is your action for tonight. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
We went into this in depth at our last meeting. Does anyone have any questions at this time? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion. I'll recognize Councilmember Abadi.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just start again.
Sure.
I make a motion to Council approve ordinance 2024-74-0 of the Mooresville Town Council approving a master sign plan for the Southport Innovation Campus located at 991 Aviation Parkway.
I have a motion from Councilmember Abadi, a second from Mayor Protem Garamella. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Manager Zudma will facilitate the next action item. I dare you to go faster than the last one.
Buckle up. All right, good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for a few minutes tonight. We are back in regards to a potential amendment to Rule 25 of the Town Council Policies and Rules of Procedure that specifically relates to proclamations and resolutions. I'm gonna take you to the end of that process, or that presentation. We talked last time about the highlights of what would be addressed there. In short, that is a plan to give greater guidance to what proclamations will be read in a meeting, what might be just acknowledged in a meeting, and what might be presented at other places outside of the Town Council meetings. We also talked about some guidance around holding people accountable to deadlines and making sure that we were prioritizing if we had multiple proclamations and doing no more than three live in a meeting, because we've had some very heavy proclamation meetings. So we were looking to put some additional guidance to that. So with Michelle's help, we came up with this direction or this guidance. So the updates for tonight, circling back to that April 9th meeting, I'm just gonna go through a number of the questions you had asked. Some of those are already sort of addressed, and I'll highlight that, and then a few things that I've amended in the policy to address some of your questions or concerns. There was a question about the town to carry policies. They are actually less specific than ours is intended to be. They focus primarily on case-by-case. So in my review of what they've got out there, that's what I found. You expressed interest in avoiding political and international issues. If you look at 1C-6A and 1C-6D, they speak to political issues and controversial matters, so I think that would avoid those being acceptable as proclamations. How this would impact the volume of proclamations, we anticipate that it should certainly reduce the number of proclamations read live in a meeting, but Michelle is in the process of sort of developing a list of all the proclamations that have been read over the last year or so. So once we get that together, we'll be able to give you a little bit more of a report on that. But we do anticipate it should reduce that workload. We discussed whether your preferences for resident proclamations given to individuals to be presented outside of council meetings. Yes, that is the preference, and it's addressed in 1D-5E of the policy. You discussed whether a proclamation intended to be read at a town event or a private event should also be read at a council meeting. Consensus was not to read a proclamation intended for a private event in a council meeting. We had a little miscommunication in regards to that tonight, but this policy will help us address that going forward. Consensus was to allow a proclamation that recognizes a topic being celebrated at a town event would also be read at a council meeting, and these issues are addressed in 1D-1A-3. Yeah, it gets a little long there. So you also expressed some interest after the meeting in addressing a rotation amongst council members who would read proclamations. So this has been addressed for both proclamations that would be read at a council meeting and at town events in Section 1D-1A of the policy. What that basically says is if one of you were to introduce a proclamation, you would read that proclamation, given it would be your material. Proclamations that are not introduced by you will be read on a rotational basis, and we'll handle the tracking of that for you. Proclamations related to town events will also be read on a rotational basis, and again, tracked by staff. Council members may elect to share the reading of proclamation at an event. I think that happened this past Saturday at Nepal Day. So that would be whoever's at the event just getting together and figuring out how you'd like to handle that, if there is a sharing. And then, of course, you can always decline the opportunity to read a proclamation if you're not comfortable for any reason. So that's the adjustments that were made. Happy to take any questions if you have them, and if not, would ask you to consider approval of the resolution amending the policy.
Councilmember Abadi.
So the way the policy reads right now with some of the guidance we received is that if it's recognizing an individual, it would normally be done outside of a meeting. But again, I would suggest that it's a policy which provides guidance. So if you, as a group, decided that there should be an exception to that, for, I think, a specific reason, because again, we don't want to sort of dismiss the policy and open it back up. But if there was an individual you all felt needed to be recognized or was worthy of being recognized, you could certainly do that.
I guess, just can you give me an example of where an individual, like, let's say that an individual saved a kid from a burning car, like, where, for example, would that, mine's on. Where, for example, would, if not in a council meeting, where would something like that be read?
I think something like that might well be read in a council meeting unless there was some other celebration of that person for what they did outside of the council meeting. I think it's more, we're anticipating the ones outside of the meeting being more about perhaps individual achievement, not necessarily related to a community or a town council activity.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate the clarification.
I just had a quick question about the rotation of the proclamations. I wasn't aware that the process was broken, because people just asked me if they want to read it, and I let them read it, so.
So I think that the request that I received was related to not only council-reading proclamations in council, but also at other town events, and making sure that there was a rotation for that, as well as what I was asked to include.
Okay. And the reason being, you don't think the mayor should be reading proclamations at events, or?
Well, it wasn't my request, but I will tell you, I think to be more inclusive of council. I think that is a good thing, quite frankly.
I think rotating is a nice idea.
Sounds good. Did anyone else have any other questions?
I'll make a motion.
Entertaining a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-1310 of the Mooresville Town Council amending Rule 25 of the Town Council Policies and Rules of Procedure on Proclamations.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Johnson, a second from Councilmember Scruggan-Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. That was pretty quick.
Yes, sir. I'm on it. Thank you.
We're now at Council and Manager Comments. I'll start off with Mayor Protem Garamella, followed by Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Johnson, followed by myself.
So the Nepalese community had their Nepal Day event this past Saturday, and I was happy to attend again this year, and just want to say happy 2081 to all those that celebrate. It's also their new year. So their new year is 2081. And then, the only other comment I have is for council. I sent an email about our litter sweep coming up, so if you could just let me know dates that are good for you, and I'll try to find a date that the majority can attend, and we'll schedule our litter sweep for the spring. Thank you.
It's me, and then Councilmember Abadi. I just want to wish everyone a Happy Earth Day, and want to take a point of personal privilege. I'm very proud of my son, who decided to go to NC State, and he actually made the dance team there as well. So very proud of all the efforts that he's made to develop that talent. Councilmember Abadi, followed by Councilmember Fender.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the privilege of attending the glass project for DECA at Panther Creek this weekend to judge entries in what will be an international competition to be held in California for business presentations from these future business leaders, who I think we're all gonna end up working for someday. And that was an amazing experience, and every team worthy of international recognition. So very proud of those kids. And I also attended the Earth Day Gala for the Wakabumi Foundation, which was started by our own Narki in her backyard during COVID, and is now a thriving and very worthwhile nonprofit that I was very proud to support in that way. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao.
I have no comments.
Councilmember Rao, followed by Councilmember Scruggan-Johnson.
Just a couple. Just want to remind everybody, Nepal Day was great. Want to thank everyone for that. May 15th, I'm gonna be putting it on my social media about my summit that we're hosting with John Chambers on AI and the future. John, Francisco, I want to wish all the Jewish friends and families a happy Passover, and Earth Day to everybody. And the final two things I'll say is that Mayor Protem Garamella and Councilmember Johnson and I attended Secretary Jennifer Granholm's visit to Wake Tech, and it was amazing. She actually spoke about Forge Battery, and then I got to interview her for about 20 minutes for WPTF Radio, and she was really excited about what was going on in Mooresville. So I think she was great. Former governor of Michigan, so it was great spending time with her. And I just want to say, the final thing I'll say is, a small business, I just really think that there's so many reasons why we're getting these awards, but I think the diversity we have, the fact that we're bringing so many people around all over the world. Raj Bandari, actually, last year, he's a Nepalese, man, he won the SPA Editor of the Year. So hopefully, we can continue that momentum. And I forgot to make those comments when I presented the proclamation. And the mayor and I attended the Wake Ignite program. I brought my cape, because Dr. Ross said we were all illuminators, which means we bring joy. So the Marvels has the Avengers, and Wake Tech has the illuminators. So I was gonna wear the cap and the mask, but since we're on, I'm not gonna do that, but maybe someday I will. But it was pretty funny, and really, really great event. So I want to thank Wake Tech for everything they do.
Thank you. Councilmember Scruggan-Johnson, please.
No comments.
Town Manager Zudma.
Just a reminder for those of you attending City Vision.
Don't yell at me, please. Correct me, sorry. So those of you attending City Vision, you should have something at your place as far as the reservation and some of that information. Any questions? Bianca will continue to assist you with that. And Giselle and I and Aaron will see you down there at some point tomorrow or Wednesday. That's all.
Okay, excellent. At this time, we're moving down to the table for a work session. It's to discuss the town center street scape, and that's gonna be facilitated by Michelle Stiegel, our planning director. So please check your mics are on once we're seated at the table. Thank you. I'll pass it at this time to our planning director, Michelle Stiegel, to help facilitate this session. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I'm really just gonna introduce this item and then hand it over to the SING team. You see a number of them here this evening. Melissa Brand at the end is gonna be doing most of the presentation and facilitating majority of the discussion tonight. But what we did want to talk to council about was the street scape for Town Center. You may recall that the plan development for Town Center does include a condition that the SING team would come back, talk with Town Council about the Town Center, get approval from the town of the street scape design. I do want to emphasize just how critical the street scape is going to be to creating a character and a sense of place, and just that pedestrian environment that the town is trying to create with the Town Center. It is one of the most critical pieces to really setting an area apart as different and unique and creating that experience. So that is what we want to focus on with the Town Council tonight, is the experience, the look and feel that you're going for. We're gonna take that feedback from you. The team is gonna go back and refine and prepare some designs and come back to you with some cost estimates, but we want to have that higher level of discussion with council first. With that, I'll just go ahead and hand it over to Melissa.
Hey, everybody. As Michelle said, my name is Melissa Brand. I'm a landscape architect with Kimley Horn, and I'm here to my right, joined by members from SING Development. I appreciate you guys allowing us to come speak with you tonight about the street scapes. As Michelle said, we're going to focus solely on the street scapes, and that's really gonna help shape the public realm for the Mooresville Town Center development. Okay, perfect. Thank you. So the purpose of this presentation, again, we want to update you where we're at in the overall design process right now and to get your feedback, but also really just determine the experience you want to create for the community, and of course, doing that while keeping safety a key priority, you know, while we take your feedback tonight. So following this presentation, we will be taking your feedback, refining the street scape initial design, and then working with Bob at Construction to create an initial cost estimate.
If I can interject one second. Thank you, Melissa. But we have had a meeting with staff in engineering and public works as well. So I just wanted to let you know that there have been other meetings that led to this one, where we talked about maintenance, long-term maintenance, and the abuse of vehicular traffic on certain different materials that led us to where we're at tonight. So there have been that level of discussion with town staff as well.
Yes. Now, you'll see here on the slide, we have our overall development limits in red. In the center of the screen is the proposed park area, which has also been referred to as the town green. And then, to just help orient you, right down here in this corner is the existing Public Safety and Municipal Services Building. Tonight, for this discussion, the areas that we're really focused on are highlighted in blue here. So we've got Carolina Street, that existing street from the roundabout all the way to Church Street, but then also a new extension of an existing street foxglove here. We are proposing to extend that from the intersection at Carolina Street all the way down to Town Hall Drive. And a key component for the overall vision of the space And a key component for the overall vision of the space is to create a very active and vibrant destination here at the Town Center. Really a space that can be used for day-to-day recreation, but also special events throughout the year. In one way, we're proposing to do this, as we've been working to develop these concepts with town staff, is making the extension of Foxglove Drive really a more pedestrian-oriented space. And doing that, one of the key ways we're proposing to do that is to make that a curbless street. So, it really, it makes it a lot easier to expand the existing town green area out into that curbless street for larger events to utilize more of the space. And this is going to be more and more important as your community continues to grow and get larger. And here's just an example of really like the vision we're trying to achieve here. This is an existing curbless street that is closed quite often for festivals and farmers' markets and such. So, you see here on the screen, in this graphic, this really helps illustrate how we focused on the extension of Foxglove Drive to accommodate a multiple different sizes of events. So, you could see here in green, in this area, this is what we focused on for smaller event space. So, anywhere between 10 and 15 tents or vendors could just be accommodated in that one closure area. For medium events, you can look here in the orange space, the more northern section, that can accommodate anywhere between 40 and 45 vendors. And then, for larger events, really looking at closing most of that extension space in the blue area there, and accommodating all the way up to 65 vendors there. And I did want to note that in each of these different scenarios, it has been designed so that the parking lots right here that you see, and then also just beside the PSMS building here, both of those would still stay open and functional while those events are occurring within Foxglove. This next map here really illustrates the streetscape and how that may be broken up using different materials and colors and patterns into drivelanes, parking spaces, pedestrian areas, and then a multi-use path area. And the next few slides, we did want to get more into two different potential options, what we've really been working with staff over the past few months to prepare for you guys. But before I dive too far into those, I did want to talk about a few of the high-level similarities across both options. So, as I mentioned, in both options, Foxglove Drive has been designed, that extension of it, as a curbless street. And we're anticipating strategically placing things like street trees, light poles, bollards, site furnishings, to really help define and designate and prevent vehicular traffic from entering the pedestrian-only area. Something else to note, both options do use pavers as a key material. And then, third, the general layout of the road, the dimensions, and the total number of parking spaces accomplished in each one as parallel spaces is the same in both options. Are there any questions before I move on?
I think I would just add that those cross-sections are actually set in development, so the width of the sidewalks, the width of the roads are usually half, a lot of that has already been decided within the development, so it really depends on materials.
So, and for materials, are we talking about permeable pavers or pavers?
I think that that's up for discussion, you know, if permeable pavers are something you want to look at, we definitely can do that. We haven't gotten into that specific at this time, but there's no reason why you couldn't incorporate permeable pavers out here.
Other than cost.
Correct. That is a factor, for sure.
And I can just add to that, one of the areas that we have looked at for permeable pavers is, can you scroll down to the bottom? When you pull in off of Town Hall Drive and make the left, that little section in there, because while it is a parking lot, it's right at the tail end of like the park area, so we were thinking that that would be a good place for a permeable paver, so that it, well, and it also would, when it's not being used, it would actually not look like a paved area. So, that was some of the things that we've been talking about, and that could be a good location for a permeable paver.
Which area, again? That one?
I'll add one more thing about the permeable pavers. We normally look into those. We normally look into permeable pavers when we're trying to add solutions for our stormwater controls, and in this case, as we have the wetland across the street, it would really be an optional item at this point, because we're covered with our stormwater with the wetland.
All right. Well, first, we're going to jump into option A here. As you can see on the screen, this utilizes more of a cool color palette, so more grays and tans throughout the design, and there is a distinctive decorative pattern in the paving. The driveline area does have more of that flush gutter pan and no curb, as we previously discussed, but this helps to signal the drivers, you know, where the drive space is in those lanes. The pedestrian area then uses a very different paving pattern, just to really help differentiate that pedestrian space versus the vehicular space. And this is shown on the layout of the extension of Foxglove Drive, so that section of the development that would be anticipated to be closed down for the special events. We did also want to show you this on Carolina Street, though, because that is an important component of the development as well. So, this next slide takes this option and applies this overall look and feel to that street. We've carried the same materials that were on the previous slide in the pedestrian zone onto Carolina Street as well, while opting for more traditional pavements in the drive aisles and the parking spaces. So, as you can see, we've proposed asphalt for those, and Carolina Street would have a traditional curb and gutter as well. You can also see something special about Carolina Street is the fact that it includes a multi-use path on the right-hand side, and our intent is to differentiate with this with a different pavement pattern than the pedestrian area, while also using different colors and potentially paver shapes to help designate the flow on each traffic of that, on each side of that multi-use path, because the intent is for that to really kind of be an extension of the greenway and connect that to the north. Our next slide just includes a few additional precedent images for the overall look and feel that we're trying to achieve in option A. As you can see, you know, it does have the cool color palette throughout, but something I did want to note that is consistent in both of these options, they're using colored pavers in place of traditional roadway striping within the roads and the crosswalks, which really gives kind of an elevated feel to the space over just traditional painted striping. So, I wanted to make sure to point that out to you guys. Are there any questions about option A specifically? We, of course, will have plenty of time at the end as well, if not.
I think this looks visually really inviting and, you know, gives me a positive feel, but I'm just wondering about the maintenance of the roads? Because if you're not doing traditional striping, what is the delta? What is the expectation to have this special kind of texture and color and stuff like that, and how much of a difference would that be anticipated?
So, we have been, you know, meeting with staff several times, putting down and then. This is something that the Public Works Department has brought up, and we've talked through. The use of pavers within the space, we would propose putting the pavers, especially in the vehicular travelways, on top of a concrete base, just to help minimize any future maintenance. We have also discussed potentially putting the pedestrian areas on a concrete base as well. I believe that that's something that's been preferred by the Public Works Department, so that is certainly an option to consider as well, just to help keep maintenance to a minimum.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Something else to note, just for maintenance-related, within the drive aisles for the, where the vehicles would be, we have specifically chosen the paver pattern to be one that functions very well in a vehicular space. So, it is mostly a herringbone pattern, which locks together very tightly, and it should prevent any shifting of pavers due to, you know, wheel turns and such.
Are we talking just the paver material, or are we also talking about the lighting on the streets? Like, because I'm seeing all the streets, are they having, you know, landscape lighting along with it? Because I don't see the plan that talks about it.
Yes, we haven't gotten into more detailed aspects of the lighting at this point, but we've talked about at high level the fact that there needs to be lighting within the space, and what sort of levels we want in the streetscape versus, you know, within the park space, because that will need some level of lighting as well. So, it's certainly something we're considering and would love to hear any input you have on preferences.
Yeah, I meant to say two lighting, right? One is the ground illumination, but also more interested in landscape lighting, you know, especially when you have this picture behind, like with the trees or this one, like, you know, showcasing up, like uplighting.
Right. Yeah, I think that's a great point, and when we did go through the rezoning process, we did include in that the ability to add specialty lighting, like, you know, the string lighting and such at key places, too. So, it's certainly something that we'd love to incorporate if possible.
Yeah, just I think in the nighttime, the light really brings the whole thing out.
Yeah.
So, I'm all about this, and I can't wait to see option B, but I did want to point out that to me, this, especially the vehicular areas, would be a logical place for some value engineering if we needed to, just because I, like, I think this is amazing as a nice-to-have, and I love it, but I also think that there's no, there's no inherent design issue with cars driving on pavement. So, I just want to kind of, I just want to kind of throw that out there. Like, I, again, all about this, but this, to me, qualifies as a nice-to-have.
Yeah. No, that's a great point. And I think, you know, I would consider this as a starting point for feedback, and as we move through the process, get initial costs and stuff, there are certainly the opportunities to switch out materials and, you know, maybe within the two valley gutters, maybe that's asphalt, things like that, to help make sure we keep costs in check.
Part of the reason different materials are proposed, at least on Foxglove, not on Carolina.
Carolina would just be your standard asphalt, but we're looking at this as kind of a multi-use space. So, this is an opportunity to extend the town green and to turn the street itself into an event space that would kind of naturally fold into the green in that park area.
Right, and I absolutely do understand and appreciate that clarification, and I guess my point is, I don't see any issue with when we close downtown hall. I don't think that the experience is lessened in any way by the fact that it's asphalt and not like a beautiful pavement treatment, although, again, all about this, but, you know, just a point.
Let me add one more thing, and I agree with the value engineering part. I will say that in addition to aesthetic improvements, having pavers does create like a, almost like a traffic calming, because when you drive on top of it, that's kind of like that rumble feel, so you tend to slow down when you're in an area like that. So, it's important for the pedestrian's safety.
Are the pavers cooler than asphalt?
Heat wash, you mean?
Yes.
It depends.
I think that's a great question. I would anticipate that certain colors of pavers would be cooler than, you know, typical asphalt, yes.
My gut tells me that this would be cooler, that's, you know, especially in a bed, and people are standing around going for a tent to tent.
Right.
I would much rather, I could just see it being more comfortable standing around that as opposed to asphalt.
Right.
Are we not having heated roads and cold? No?
If there are no more questions related to option A, I'll move on to option B. So, option B, this utilizes more of a warm color palette, so lots of reds, browns, tans. You know, we still have that flush condition, but both the driveline and the parking area include that herringbone pattern that I mentioned earlier, to really help designate, you know, this is the vehicular zone. And then, the pedestrian area uses a very different pattern and paver color to create that contrast. And this, again, is the section of Foxglove Drive that would be more for that pedestrian event space.
I really, really like the brick and this coloring, too, because for me, this is where I was thinking last night that I'm the only southerner on the council. To me, this is more reflective of, you know, just southern atmosphere, and I recall that there's a lot of areas in downtown Raleigh that are brick. You know, they might not even necessarily be the original, but they're brick, and I just called up the area in front of the Governor's Mansion, and the sidewalk in front of the Governor's Mansion is brick, the road is asphalt. But I just think as an aesthetic, this just calls in a more of a southern feel. Even though we're very international, kind of like still maintaining that southern history.
I like this, I like this option, too.
I'm glad we had three.
Yes. Well, the work that we did on Jeremiah is brick, too, so this would tie in a lot better. I like, I'm a warm color person anyhow, the cool colors don't excite me at all.
Where we use the brick around Carolina, around the library, it just is very aesthetically.
Yeah, no, you bring up a great point as far as tying to what's, you know, existing and going to stay there. That is something that we're asking for your input on at the end of the presentation. So, that's a very, you know, forward-thinking.
Yeah. I like the colors, but my, also the question is, on a high level, when you have the sidewalks, there are cottages, right? What is the color of the cottages, too, are important to basically blend in? You know, is the same kind of follow-through, or that is also a crit- More than elevation, the colors, right?
Garamella, I missed what you said.
So, the cottages, which are there, cottages?
Retail cottages.
Retail cottages, which are there, it will, I'm assuming there will be brick or whatever it is. It has to have, that color has to blend with the sidewalk or some kind of a thing, it has to be a good uniform color, like, which blends in well. So, when we are doing this, it's holistically, we had to look at those ones, too. So when we are doing this, it's holistically, we had to look at those ones too.
No, that's a great comment.
Yeah, this one thing I've noticed, I like the brick. I have one child that's graduated from Carolina and one's at State. And the thing I love about NC State on their campus is the brick quad. And it really is aesthetically pleasing. And a lot of the campus, it just looks so good with the buildings. Like what Brett Temps said, a lot of the buildings are brick and it blends well with the brick quad. And it's just very nice feel there on their campus. So I just, you know, saw that my son goes there now, so.
Yeah.
Also to keep in mind is, we have too many examples of brick too. So what is unique that we are creating here is also important not to, you know, stereotype everything which is all around too. So both, both kind of reasoning is there. Because we have only one shot to do this right and we better have this right.
Be a concrete base so you can pull them out and swap them out every few years.
Every month you will do that?
Who's paying for that?
We did also have a graphic that applied this option to Carolina Street. So you could see what that looks like. So you'll see here, we've carried again the same pedestrian zone materials from the previous slide on Foxglove to Carolina Street as well. So to really make that cohesive throughout the development. But we are utilizing traditional asphalt for the drivelines and the parking areas. There is also still the multi-use path as well that we would intend to use, you know, different paper colors or, and/or shapes to help designate the flow of traffic as seen in the photo on the bottom left of the screen. That's a great example of how you can do that. And following this, we do have a few more precedent images that really help just portray the overall feel of this option. This option is more, I guess, limited and specific in the, the variation of size and shape of the pavers used. They are all pretty much that more traditional rectangular brick shape. But there is more, I guess, contrast in the colors used to help designate those different pedestrian and vehicular zones throughout the space.
But in the example, in the, in the graphics, it showed the sidewalks as white, which is actually what I really liked about this option.
Oh, yeah.
But it looks like all the sidewalks in these are red.
I think, yes.
I really like the white side.
That was intentional. I, I feel like it would look better if there was a little more contrast for the pedestrian space, especially if you do have, some of the buildings have that more traditional red brick. It would be good to have some contrast between that. So yeah, that, this one does include more of the reddish sidewalks. But we can change those colors in any way we need to, within a certain range, you know.
Do you have the lights too?
I think that would be a great idea.
Yeah, I like the lights.
It really does help just set the feel for the whole space.
I want to echo and, I, I agree with that. I like the, the light white or whatever, so.
Yeah. No, all great comments. So this slide, you know, we welcome any input you guys have at all, but there are a few key items we want to make sure that we go over with you tonight so that we can get feedback on these before we move forward in the overall design. So one of those being, you know, do you prefer more of the traditional look versus the modern look? Is there, it sounds like there's maybe a way you're leaning. I would say that option A would be considered more modern, whereas option B, more of that timeless traditional. Also, are there colors you're leaning more towards? You know, the warm colors versus the cool colors? In addition to that, as it was brought up earlier, we do want to make sure we're considering the existing conditions around the space that are going to remain, whether those are paving patterns or the building architecture, like for instance, the library that's right there. And then lastly, this is more of a detail, but just the finishes of the pavement as well. There are certain pavements or pavers that come in either, you know, like a rumbled finish or might have a beveled edge to it. And those would be more of a textured surface, which would potentially be great in specific areas such as designating where the vehicular area ends and the pedestrian area starts. It's nice to have that texture difference to help, you know, designate that and signal to people. Whereas there might also be other areas where it might be better to have a smooth surface. And just wanted to get your thoughts and any concerns or questions you had on that. For instance, one area that might be better with a more of a smooth surface, maybe like a paver that doesn't have the bevel or the tumbled edge, would be potentially the multi-use path where you're bicycling.
Can we import old used bricks? I'm, I'm joking.
It's not unheard of, but there are, you know, manufactured bricks that do replicate that older look that would be easier for Public Works to have on staff or on the shelf when they need them.
Yeah, Jeffrey probably wouldn't want.
I do, I do have a comment. When we are, when we are designing this and thinking about this, I also want to think about what this means to those that have mobility issues or for seniors. And from what I understand, bricks and pavers are not good for seniors. So I don't know, when you talk about smooth versus textured surface, what, I don't know, I don't know how that kind of factors in.
Yeah, I think that's a great point to bring up. I think there are, there are specific kinds of pavers that have more of a square edge, so they lock together more seamlessly and you get less of that, you know, rumble between the pavers, which is better for things like bike areas or where you might be pushing something wheeled. Whereas sometimes people do specifically want more of the rumble or textured finish before you go into the vehicular way to help signal to people, you know, especially visual impaired people, it could be really helpful there. So I think just, I agree, being sure we're very intentional about where those are placed so that we're considering all of those, you know, elements to the design.
Okay. Yes.
Isn't there also federal standards about when you have a textured ramp or, you know, with these curbless places?
Right.
You do need to have a texture or a physical kind of signal that you're entering a road and you're great, or senior population who want to make sure that they kind of get those clues and stuff like that. You like to use a texture where it makes sense, but smooth surfaces are going to help mobility for the package.
I mean, I, I get what you're saying, but at the same time, it is hard if you can't have both, you know, you can't have texture and the, the kind of a thing. And sometimes textured is good. People won't slip compared to the slippery yes, too.
It's the degree of the texture. People, if there's a lot of texture, people will scrape their knees and fall down and stuff like that. I mean, it's like, you know, the way that we have our sidewalks, we have significant texture so people know when they're getting on it and off a sidewalk. I would like to see more information about how texture is used in a curbless environment to signal to people who are using wheelchairs or, you know, different means to get around.
Not a good point. These are all, have to be on ADA standards, period. Not then you can have-
But on the other hand, I do like the idea of traffic calming in the vehicular lanes using the bevels or some type of texture. Because if, if everything is going to be curbless, I feel like, you know, the more traffic calming, the more natural traffic calming there is, probably the better. Yeah, cobblestones, that's-
And I would, I would, I would hope and I would assume, since we're such a young community, there'd be lots of strollers, lots of kids on bikes and want to make sure that we're accommodating all of that too. So we got a lot of people, we got to accommodate everybody.
So how is stormwater handled with this? Is that like right beside that trench? Is that a grate there to the right?
This is not a grate, actually. There, in this channel right here, it is slightly depressed and there is a great place, you know, every, so many feet to help collect that stormwater.
Okay.
And it's the same in this option up here, there's actually a trench grate. So the grate continues along the whole parking field right there to collect the water. I would say in this condition, I would recommend doing more something like this bottom option, simply because Foxglove will curve so much. It would be hard to do that trench drain along the whole way. It'd be more of like a custom item then.
Sounds pricey.
So to kind of answer your questions, I'll start at the bottom. I'm all about the function, so I like the idea of having the smooth surfaces where people are going to be biking and walking on the multi-use path. And then whenever safest for the rest would be good. I think we're going to work with the surrounding existing materials, the blending. I think that'll be a later one. Don't really care about the color palette. I did notice in option A, there was the opportunity to have shapes within the intersection. I'd love to have some Ms. or something. So I don't know if you can do that with bricks or if that would be limiting.
Is it worse though?
Yeah. Just not necessarily, just an option to possibly want it. We're, we're very early in the stages now, so.
Yeah, there is the possibility. Yeah, like we did this, this is in Greer, South Carolina, a project that we did. And we did a custom kind of pavement here that really, you know, highlighted the town just in that intersection, so that, something like that.
Traditional brick?
This, I believe, it is kind of an inset metal piece that we actually put decorative concrete around. But it's just in that spot, so it's a kind of a special area.
We don't want to duplicate the problem that Carrie had. Carrie tried to do something like that and they had to tear it up.
Oh, really?
Just make sure we're avoiding that.
Yeah, definitely. There are certainly, there is a paver company that I know of specifically that does custom more shapes and stuff out of the traditional brick, so that could be an option as well. Yeah.
Yeah, I like the herringbone pattern.
Yeah, I really do too.
Yeah.
Like right there, all of that looks nice.
You mean the bottom picture, right?
No, I was talking about the top.
See, I like the bottom one.
I like the bottom one. It's more modern and appealing.
I do think, I want to note, there is the potential to kind of blend the two. So if we like more of the warm colors, but some of the patterns shown in option A, like the crisscross, we could implement that maybe at special areas like the intersections or crosswalks and such to kind of marry the two options.
Can you give us like some places to go see? Because it's hard to throw this kind of-
We're in South Carolina, man.
Let's go, let's go tomorrow, man.
Not going.
No, I'm going to say like, like Fenton or at least some examples that you gave.
Some Winston-Salem. Isn't there downtown, something of that?
If there is, then let's go see it. Because I want to see what it looks like, not, you know, make decisions on a, on a, listen, it's the overall ambience of what it is.
I was sending Todd some pictures where we, I mean, if you guys are in Charlotte and it's not that far, they're, they're, Fenton's a good example, local example, actually, great, great local.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Or even, even the Cary, Cary Park is also very good.
Fenton's a good example of like a bunch of mixed materials, like stone, brick. Hey man, it's like, you know, you don't really pay attention. I think that's the goal here, like it should look nice, but it should, it should stand out.
Even that funky grass over there is like, whatever that, whatever that green, that town green is made of in front of the theater.
That's just true.
I mean, I'm not a fan, but I'm just saying it is there.
My only comment about Fenton would be they use a lot of different materials.
They do.
I find it to be almost a little wonky and at the same time it can be very difficult for us if we have to do maintenance to store like 500 different paper types. We're going to stick to like maybe three, four, five.
Yeah, that's a great point. It is a good place to go though, if you want to see different options to maybe consider. But yeah, I would agree, I would probably discourage you from using all of them. Yeah, they, they have a similar setup with the pavers and ironworks, so that would be a good option to go see.
If you can email us or at least something that we can know.
Where's that? Where?
I don't know that they, I mean, I think by my points, maybe around there.
It's over off like Atlantic Avenue, near Six Forks.
We could get you a list of some local examples of councils interested in going out and seeing some of these firsthand. Just in terms of timing, just so council knows, before the site plan, construction plan applications could be submitted, this decision will need to be made because, you know, this is something that will need to be on those plans. Also, it plays into the development agreement that you're working on and obviously the cost associated with that. So just in terms of timing, if we, if we, we obviously can get you some examples, go out and take a look at this, we're planning on coming back at a second meeting anyways. But just want to be mindful of timing and making sure that we're keeping the project moving.
Michelle, that's like one week, this whole week, we are already in NCLM. So that's only one week to see all the places. And I think if these kind of things come in the future, give us a headway. So at least we know what is, we're getting into then putting us a one-week block.
We'll look at some places.
Let's go to West Virginia, they got a beautiful Charleston.
No, I'm not going to West Virginia.
I grew up, they, their downtown is beautiful. Charleston, West Virginia, it's, it's like, it's like, like the first option is gorgeous. And they revitalized it, it's really nice. Five hours away.
So is this the, this is the slide that we're to react to? Is there any more?
Yeah, this, these are the main things we're hoping for input on. But, you know, feel, feel free to send anything our way, you know, if you think of something even after we leave tonight. We're happy to provide a list of local examples, just so you can get out and see things in person. Yeah, I appreciate everybody's time.
I would just say, a lot of us sort of gave some thoughts and we're in a certain direction early, so if people just want to resummarize.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think I haven't answered all these questions.
Because we don't necessarily need to see a lot of things, but I think, if you want to go down the line, do you want to start?
Thank you. So I do like the cool grays, but if the majority likes the reds, that's fine. It's more of a traditional university kind of town, downtown kind of thing. Remember that our, our library has more of the tans. So do you want the library to pop? You know, just think about how, you know, as you're walking along, you're, you see the library versus if we go with the same palette, they won't be popping, you know? It won't be as distinctive, so maybe the reds would work. I like a mix of materials, but yet I am mindful of maintenance, both on the road as well as, you know, in the other areas. And that's a carrying cost to the town for repair and maintenance. I do want to see examples, so if we could have examples, we can go on little excursions independently just to get more visual, because I'm a visual learner by the way I absorb information. And I like the use of some textured surfaces to delineate zones or activity types and so forth like that. But I think along multi-use pathway, we need to think more smooth so that we can support safety for multiple types of movement there. That's it.
My turn. I'm all about the brick. I, I do think it would be interesting to do some blending where it makes sense. And as well as with textured versus smooth, I think you definitely want- And as well as with textured versus smooth, I think you definitely want smooth with the, in the pedestrian areas. Um, but yeah, overall, the, the red warm coloring with brick.
Okay, I echo that. I'm definitely a warm person. I like the brick, more of a traditional look. Although I will tell you, I think, um, some modern quirky kind of pops would be really fabulous. So, and I, you can take that and interpret it a hundred different ways. But, um, I think that, um, um, that could help distinguish what we're trying to do here versus just your same old, old brick, brick buildings, brick walkway, brick, brick, brick. I, I'm not into that, but, um, um, but I don't think you are either. You've given us some really good, um, visuals here to look at. And I'm just gonna say, because some of us talked about the lights. I love the lighting around the trees. I love the lighting that goes across the street, you know? So the lighting looks fabulous. I know that's not what we're here for tonight, but, um, definitely some kind of, I, I, I don't know if blending is the right word to what's already existing, but complimentary, whatever, comp, we need to complement what's already out there. And, um, you know, there's brick already on Carolina. There's brick at some of those intersections, like behind the library. So, um, and then, yeah, and then as far as the whole textured smooth, just however we can accommodate, um, strollers, bicycles, old people, older people who are, um, have mobility issues and anybody who has mobility issues.
I already went, but then I was thinking, um, when you were talking about the blending, the earlier visuals about the cottage retail was very white and modern. So I guess this would probably carry into that. I think you're, that's what you were intimating earlier.
And we, I mean, there, the visuals were just more of a mass thing, right? They're just to show you the scale. It wasn't gonna be what it's gonna.
Yeah, those were just massings. Those weren't really designed buildings at that point.
Okay, understood. Um, I think I prefer the brick a little bit, but I would be okay with the other more modern. Um, I like the idea of having the pedestrian crossings being like different colored bricks. Like the other way was really cool when they had the white. But I do like the idea of having the different three sections look differently. I think that's really clever. And this whole thing like is the curbless Wornhof. I really like that, that, that's very Amsterdam, very European. And I think that's the feel that we're going for in this space. So I really appreciate y'all bringing that forward.
Excuse me. I like the reds. More traditional look, the brick. I like the idea of blending with different materials, but not too many, um, to make it more manageable. And, um, I, I don't know, I can't really, I'm, I don't know really where it's at with textured surfaces versus smooth surfaces. I've seen downtown with both, so I'd be fine with textured, but it doesn't really make a difference.
Uh, so I definitely prefer the cleaner, more modern look of the bottom one. I could get okay with the, the red palette, but I really, I really dislike in this top representation here, the, the monochromatic sidewalk to street. I, I really vastly preferred the, the white sidewalk. And I would, I mean, I guess I, probably as long as the sidewalks, you know? Yeah, like I really like that quite a bit. So, you know, that being the case, I guess I could probably go either way on the, the colors. And then I, I think we should, you know, I think it should not clash with what's already there. I don't think we have to marry exactly, but, you know, it'd be better if there wasn't just a visual disconnect, I suppose. And on the textured versus smooth, I say safety first. You know, textured in the vehicular areas, smooth in the pedestrian and multimedia areas would be fine with me.
I, as much as I like the bricks, I'm not a fan of bricks for our downtown. You know, we have too many places with red brick all across. What is that unique that we can create? You know, I was just thinking, um, we went to New Bern and the sidewalks are all brick. If you remember, you walked that entire area. It's, so we're not trying to replicate a old town feeling here. You know, our population of Morrisville is very young in their thirties. What is that that will attract them here so that this cottage retail will be successful? Our downtown will be successful? That is the key for me. You know, color is what do they like? Are they like, are they more attracted to modern? You know, are they attracted to the old traditional southern? You know, look at the dynamics of the demographics of the population that is, you know? So those are the factors which I really want, I don't want to hone on the color more than like what is the trendy thing that basically brings them here? You know, we still talk about Fenton, this is a wow factor. What is that wow factor you can create? If it is replicating one of NC State or New Bern bricks, it's not adding, you know? They could, they have more options to go somewhere else too, you know? So what is that we can do act, uh, in, in regards to textures and smooth? As long as they are ADA, you know, and through all those things, I would prefer texture because that adds good value. And as end of the day, it's the families will come and spend money there. So whatever attracts them.
To be fair though, Satish, either way, I mean, I don't think we, I don't think budget-wise, we can do something that's really gonna break new ground in terms of.
The color wise, I'm saying.
You know, but, but I'm saying like design scheme, like the, the modern versus the traditional brick, you know? I definitely see your point if we could afford to do something like, like cutting edge and really cool. But, you know, but I think that we're, like, we're either going modern that already exists somewhere else or traditional that already exists somewhere else. So we might as well just pick the one we like better, you know?
Yeah, that's the reason they get the big bucks to pick, uh, pick what is good, right?
I think the town green is gonna bring people. And the restaurants and the marbles, if we get that, um, will bring the people. I'm curious about that crosswalk in the top picture, how that was accomplished? Is that different colored bricks?
Yep, that's right.
I like that.
Yeah, so the crosswalk, it has a different colored brick banding. Um, but then you can see kind of faint in this picture because it's taken at night. But there is the crisscross within the intersection as well.
Especially if I recall, I think last city vision, when we were, who went to Kannapolis? Now like their downtown.
To Wilmington?
No, the one before, we had in Concord. Yeah. You keep him, I just, you, you were there with us. So like when we went there, that, that textures and, you know, it gives a very modern look.
Anything else?
I don't believe so. I think, um, you know, we'll take the feedback we've received here tonight and move forward with refining, um, one of the options. It probably will end up being a slight combination because, um, I do think it could be, you know, nice to have maybe some of the patterning within, you know, a few key spots like the crosswalks and the intersections and such. Um, but then maybe, you know, sticking to more option. I'm hearing B maybe is the winner, uh, across everybody as we went through. Um, so we can move forward, you know, with refining this. And then at that point, we will be working with Bobbit Construction to start looking at costs for this.
And just to remind council, there's one more touch point needed, um, before site plan is submitted that I think we're gonna be looking to get on the schedule. I mean, relatively soon, we'll have to look at your calendar. Um, but thing is to present concept renderings for the multi-use building. That's not an approval, but it's just a presentation to get your feedback for them to take into consideration as they're finishing up those designs. So that's coming as well.
Thank you very much for all this good work and we look forward to seeing the next step.
Thank you for the great feedback.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Town manager, anything for the good of the order? Okay, uh, I'd like to thank everyone for, for watching this, uh, meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. If you want to reach us, you can do so at towncouncil@morrisvillnc.gov. Visit us online, www.morrisvillnc.gov. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Body, a second from Councilmember Johnson. If you have a favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, it's ten twenty, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Any opposed? Hearing none. That carries unanimously. It's ten twenty. We are adjourned. Thank you all.[7.16][7.16](applause)